Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I believe we've got the majority of people online at the moment. So, welcome this evening. I just wanted to go through quickly that we have everyone joining us this evening for our first Zoom committee of the whole budget meeting. And since we'll be using Zoom to conduct our meeting, I'd just like to clarify how the meetings will be managed this evening. So for efficiency and sound quality, we would ask that you use the mute and unmute function. You may also start and stop the video option depending on your comfort. Given that this is going to be a public meeting, which is live streamed, you might wish to consider stopping the video if at any point you feel uncomfortable. We can also stop video helps with bandwidth issues that might also arise with unstable Wi-Fi connections. There is a chat option available, but our preference would be that you don't use it unless you're having some technical difficulties this evening. And if you do wish to speak, please raise your hand by clicking or tapping the participants icon at the bottom of the screen and using the button labeled "Raise Hand." If you're using an iPad, this is located at the top of your screen. And to make it visible, you just tap the screen. I will call upon you in order of your raised hand. And when you are called upon, please unmute yourself and speak. And once you're finished, please lower your hand and mute yourself again. When we are seeking consensus on the receipt and approval of the agenda, I will ask for a mover and seconder. Please raise your hand if you wish to move or second. And I will call out the name of the mover and the seconder accordingly. And we'll use the yes and no button to vote on acceptance. So raise your hand if you have a question. When trustees are voting, please use the yes and no button to vote. If you're having any audio issues or your internet connection is not reliable, you might want to use your phone. When you want to raise your hand to speak, using the phone option, you press * 9. And for voting on an agenda approval, you will have to audibly announce your vote, just as you would do during a conference call. So at this point, I do wish to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the meeting. The purpose of today's meeting is to discuss the update on the budget development process, to share financial forecast, and to discuss the upcoming scheduled committee of the whole budget meetings. So if I could have a mover for approving the agenda for this evening? Trustee Ellis, thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Trustee Blackburn in favor.
Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that that is then moved. So Director, I'd like to call upon you to introduce the update for this evening.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Just by way of introduction of the package that we will be presenting this afternoon, this evening, I would like to acknowledge, first of all, Memo 2007-4, which presents a context for the rest of the package that will be coming forward. The context, of course, that is being presented is some of the realities that we face in this budget time. And in the memo, we identify that while it is that there are some mitigating challenges that we do have to navigate, we do recognize that and call to your attention that there are some key principles that are guiding the budget process as we continue to move forward with this process. So one of the key principles that is really informing the way it is that we're looking at this budget is around ensuring stability. One of the challenges that we face right now is that there are many unknowns. And so we continue to move forward with a goal of trying to ensure stability, not only for schools, but also for our workplaces and community. We also, of course, recognize that the key principle of safety is another piece that informs our next steps in terms of the budget, particularly as we consider some of the emerging realities pertaining to COVID-19 and the that there's much uncertainty there. And so we recognize that those are two key principles. The third key principle, as ambitious as it may seem, is the commitment to continuing to advance the work of the strategic plan. And so while it is that certainly some of the strategic actions have been deferred at this point, we continue to work very hard to use the resources that we do have at our disposal, both human and financial, to continue on with the work that we had envisioned when we pulled together the strategic plan last year this time. So those three key principles are the guiding principles. We do, and I'm sure that trustees and our non-voting partners who are here with us today are all too cognizant of the uncertainties around COVID and what the next school year would look like. So that we do also identify in that memo that there are certainly those uncertainties that are playing a role. And indeed, the fact that we remain uncertain as to the arrival of the DSNs from the ministry. And so our reliance on collaboration with the ministry does play a role in this and recognizing that the province is grappling with its own uncertainties regarding this process situation. We know that that has an impact on our capacity to move forward with one of our key operational functions. So that's enshrined and captured in the memo. And you also have in your package, Report 20052, which also has a number of appendices that outline some of the details captured in the report. And I do believe that the team will be presenting the salient points of the report in a presentation that is also captured in your package. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to CFO Carson, who will take us through details. And I do see that Manager Gardner is with us as well to enable the responding to any questions that you may have. CFO Carson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to begin by thanking the Director and the Chair for giving me the opportunity to offer tonight's land acknowledgement. I think it's important that we acknowledge that this meeting is taking place on ancestral lands of First Nations across this province, as far to the west as Lake Huron, on the shores of Lake Ontario, as well as the unceded Algonquin land. So we want to thank them all for sharing this land with us as we carry out our business and live our lives. Secondly, I couldn't help but notice tonight, as we were talking about setting up for Zoom, I think most trustees are aware that John McKinnon, our audiovisual technician, was retiring at the end of March. We didn't get a chance to recognize him formally because of the change in meeting schedules. But I think this is going to be the first budget meeting we've held without John in the last 12 or 13 years. So hopefully, he left us some good wishes and spirits, and we'll carry on from here. This evening, Madam Chair, we will we'll just run through the memo again. I think that the Director's done a good job of summarizing that. Then Mr. Gardner will take you through the forecast for the balance of this year so that people get an idea of what the impact of the activities of the last three months and of the next three months have done to our financial position, because that sets us up for next year. Then we will be in a position to start talking about next year, some of the investments, some of the assumptions, and some of the unknowns that we're facing. And then we want to be able to listen to members of the committee about a couple of things. The direction we should go in proceeding with approval of a budget, considering and balancing the need to have the best possible information with the need to make some of these decisions so that we are, in fact, set up to receive kids in late August and early September. And then to look through the meeting schedule to get some advice as to what that schedule could look like over the next five to six weeks. So with that, Madam Chair, I just want to reiterate some of the things that the Director has said. When we entered into these budget discussions shortly after Christmas, we had identified that we believed the board, because of the decisions that it made in the past, was in a good position to develop a budget that would call for an estimated deficit within that 1% guideline. The 1% is key, because anything more than that, you have to seek the approval of the Minister. When senior staff started to look at this, in conjunction with our own staff and listening to what we heard from members of the Budget Committee, what we heard at the other advisory committees, and the information we heard during the thought exchange discussions in the development of the strategic plan, we also are committed to one thing above all, and that is to provide as much stability as we can for students, staff, and our school communities over the coming school year. The last three months have been extremely difficult on kids in particular, but on our families who we serve. And we need to be able to provide whatever stability we can. And so it was our intention, as you recall with academic staffing, to try to make sure that we gave ourselves space to minimize the need for extensive reorganization in the fall, to minimize the need to have to unwind budget decisions. And I think you're going to see that as we move forward with the development of a recommended budget. We know that school will look different in the fall. The Minister has announced that the ministry and the government will be providing guidelines towards the end of June. Notwithstanding that, we've already begun our own work on what that will mean for us in terms of how we can serve students and still respect physical distancing, what it means in terms of our ongoing cleaning practices, what a classroom will look like, and how we can make sure we're prepared to respond quickly should the need occur to close a school, a group of schools, or the system again in response to renewed outbreaks in the fall and the winter of 2020, 2021. Finally, we do try to look ahead, though. As much as we're dealing every day with what will we do next week? How will we be ready for the 1st of July and summer learning? And how will we be ready for August 25th? We have to recognize this is one year in a long road. The strategic plan has identified the need and our aspiration to create the culture of innovation, the culture of caring, the culture of social responsibility. We as staff, just like trustees and other stakeholders, remain committed to those goals. We believe it's key if we're actually going to help our students achieve the results that they deserve. Just to put things in context with our budget planning, as early as March, even before the order to close, the ministry had indicated that the GSNs might be delayed. And again, at that point, there was uncertainty about the outcome of labor negotiations. But even then, we were told that those would be forthcoming before the end of March. As you know, it isn't just the release of the GSNs themselves. The Minister issues a, the press release, the ministry issues a memo with some details around the grants, the percentage changes up and or down, or new provisions. But what's extremely important to us is the detailed calculations that the ministry releases. And typically, those come two to three weeks after the release of the GSNs themselves. The reason it's so important for us? We budget for every million dollars that's coming in. You know, I've talked to trustees in the past. When you're budgeting for a billion dollars, of course, there's rounding, of course, there's assumptions. But we recognize that a million dollars is the potential for 10 jobs or 20 jobs, depending on the classes. Those are resources that we can put in place to serve kids and to help them achieve their potential. So it's key for us to have that tool, be able to look at it, analyze it, as we develop our final recommendations. The Director's already spoken about the uncertainty around the ministry and public health requirements for the fall of 2020. We have heard from the ministry in their discussions that there may be some financial support coming, but they don't know yet. And so in our plans, in our preliminary plans, we had already provided some, or we'd included in what we thought we would be recommending to you, some provisions to deal with the COVID outbreak. We had identified the need to provide additional custodial staff in the buildings. We knew that we would need to provide additional dollars through B and LT to fast-track some of the changes in security that we have discussed, as well as to ensure that we can continue to get technology in the hands of students as they're working from home. The final one is the one that our planning staff, I don't think I'd go as far as say they lose sleep over it, but they wrestle with it every day. That's our projected enrollments. Prior to the development and spread of the pandemic and the system closures, we had been identifying small system increases in enrollment in elementary and secondary. And as you know, since so much of our funding comes to us on a per-student basis, growth gives us dollars that we can use to help with those investments beyond the classroom teachers or the ECEs, for example, if it's a kindergarten class. We now have to try to build a budget where those enrollment projections are not as solid as we would like them to be. In addition to the usual uncertainties that we face, we have three in particular. We've seen already in the projections from OSNET that there will be a decrease in our international students. And if you remember, those students pay fees that are over and above what we receive through the grants for student needs. The second impact on enrollment will be the impact of the freeze on immigration, the challenges of people of international travel, and when that will begin to loosen up, when we might see those families arriving in Ottawa. The final one is one that we are beginning to hear about. We haven't seen the numbers yet. But with all of the uncertainties around next year, we do hear from principals, we hear from parents, that they are uncertain whether they may send their children to school for junior kindergarten in particular, or whether they might keep them at home. We don't know yet. The last few years, our pattern of enrollment has changed, and we usually have close to 15%, 20% of our kindergarten enrollment occurring through the June, July, and August months. So we still have to wait and see what will come to us. But that's another uncertainty that we're wrestling with. Tonight, we'll talk about some of these impacts, we'll talk about the dates. And we are also going to try to talk about some of the decisions that have been made to date, those that we think we can proceed with and that we think we have a plan to move forward. So Madam Chair, with that, I think I'll pause. If there's questions, general questions about the memo, we can discuss them now, or we can deal with it later in the agenda, whatever members of the committee prefer.
Thank you very much, CFO Carson. And thank you as well for the land acknowledgement that you did at the beginning of your presentation. I was remiss and at the beginning of the meeting not to acknowledge the unceded territory that we are meeting upon this evening of the Algonquin peoples and do appreciate the very lovely land acknowledgement that you did do. CFO. So I will now call upon trustees, if there are any questions on the CFO's presentation at this point. If you could just raise your hand, please, if you do have a question. Okay. I have trustee Bell and trustee Boothby.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Carson, for your great presentation and all the work that you've put into this. I'm hopeful that this is the right time of the meeting to bring this up, but I have two questions. The first of which is, you can see that this is a really thoughtful budget, considering there's so many unknowns. And so I'm wondering, when it comes to communicating to the community, how we are looking to align our budget with our three strategic objectives of social responsibility, culture of caring, and culture of innovation. Is there anything in the works to somehow spread that message, is the first question. And then the second question, I note within the memo, it says that despite the fact there are so many unknowns, there are possibilities to focus or possibly spend money either on staff or different projects. And I'm just wondering if we've given some thought, sorry, we've given some thought to the mental health of our students and the mental health of the teachers coming back into the school, and what sort of costs would be associated with that. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, with respect to the second question, I think we'll be talking about that a little further on in the in the presentation that Mr. Gardner and Mr. Doe and Ms. Adams wait to have prepared. We can talk a little bit about some of the areas that we are looking at. We recognize that the mental health supports for staff and students will be key. The ministry has recognized that as well, but they have not yet identified any source of funding. But it is one of those areas. As to how we will engage the community with those, coming out of this evening and as we move forward with the development of the budget, we will recommend, we want to make sure that people can see the clear link to those, the three pillars that we have and the goal and the associated goals. So as an example, we know that you've mentioned mental health, we know that there will be a need for support. It touches all of them, but especially that culture of caring. And we have been successful, I think. And we will be sharing that once we have a recommended budget developed so that people can understand where those investments are being recommended, as well as some of those investments we wanted to recommend and weren't able to because of the funding. So I think that will be coming, and we'll be listening this evening as well for some of that input.
Okay, thank you, CFO, and thank you, trustee Bell, for the question. Trustee Boothby, and I did see trustee Lyra on the list as well, but I'm not sure if she's still
And Chair, it's trustee Blackburn, I'd like to be on the list also, please.
Okay, trustee Blackburn, I'll put you on after. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Boothby, over to you.
Thanks. I think, actually, it sounds like staff is going to go through the PowerPoint slides that are attached to the memo. So I think I'll hold off because maybe some of my questions will be answered in that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee Boothby. Trustee Blackburn?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And just to follow up on what trustee Bell had to say, I note in this particular memo, it indicates that at this time, there are not, considering any budget-related staff reductions, which is great, but I would be looking for, around mental health, I will be looking for some actual staff enhancements in that area, in the mental health area. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Blackburn. Trustee Bell, you have your hand up again. I'm not sure whether you just didn't take it down, or you, okay, thank you. Okay, are there any further questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on then to report or item number 3.2, Report 20-052, the updated forecast. Director, I'll ask you to introduce the report, please.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. I will pass it over to CFO Carson in that the memo did serve as quite a robust introduction to the report, and the report simply builds from there. So CFO Carson, I'd like you to take us through that report and the presentation that goes along with it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of comments before I ask Kevin to take us through his presentation. The minister and the government have, in some cases, have referred to savings that are accruing to school boards as a result of these closures, and there have been some. And we have factored those in. Kevin and his staff have worked with other staff within the board to see what we think we will get to at the end of the year. But I think it's important to point out that one of the large items that contributed to the deficit not being much lower than we had predicted was a decision that we made. As a result of not being able to operate our extended day programs, we experienced a loss of revenue of about $5 million, $5 to $6 million. That hits the bottom line, whether you ascribe it to extended day or whether you ascribe it to learning. Along our goal of providing continuity of learning and as much stability, especially in the area of childcare, we did not recommend or make any, take any actions with respect to reducing the cohort of ECEs. We believe instead those ECE hours that had been used to support the EDP program were realigned and reassigned to support learning, recognizing the challenges of remote learning, especially for our youngest learners. We felt that was the right deployment of staff. And just as importantly, we recognize that if we were to reduce or think about laying staff off, it would have created tremendous disruption across the district. By the time you followed the collective agreement, there would have been far too much movement in the system. And we feared that it would have made it unlikely that we could have been ready to reinstate childcare as it was required. This is a case where the ministry's decision-making of school closures, month by month or every three weeks, certainly meant that we wanted to be able to return at the very first opportunity. We also wanted to make sure that we would be in a position to have a proper complement of fully trained and competent staff. And so that is a decision that has contributed to the deficit not being lower. We believe it was the proper approach, especially as it follows along our culture of social responsibility, our caring for students, and setting us up for a successful return to school in the fall. Having said that, I'll turn it over to Kevin, who has prepared for you the usual report that we would provide with respect to the forecast, and he also has a brief presentation for you.
Thank you very much, CFO Carson. Yeah, so the Report 2005-2 identifies our projected or updated forecast. It builds on the revised estimates, and it gathers additional information that has come to light since then. We are looking at having a slight increase in the projected deficit, just under We are looking at having a slight increase in the projected deficit, just under $10 million. And so that is, but we believe that might be a worst-case scenario because we are, we do try to be conservative in our projections. So we're looking at some revenue adjustments and expense adjustments. And those both are in the range of 31 to 32 million dollars. So they do offset for the most part, but I'll step you through some of the information. But a lot of the changes relates more to strike savings and lost revenues and some revenue as a result of the COVID changes or impacts. I do have the slide deck and I'll just put it up here on screen. Does, is it being presented? Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. So our first that I just mentioned that about having a higher-than-expected deficit in the forecast. And as you can see on this particular screen, that we do have reduced revenues by 31.8 million. Our expenses are down relative to the budget by 30.6 million, and our deficit has increased by 1.2 million. So that, and I'll go through some of the changes a bit later on here. Our next slide shows what the impact would have on our accumulated surplus. So as we were looking at using 1% of our accumulated surplus to support operations this current year, that would have reduced our accumulated surplus by 8.4 million, but because we are projecting a higher deficit, our deficit or accumulated surplus will actually reduce by an extra 1.3 million dollars at the end of the year, should that burn any other changes. Some of the items that are included in the revised estimates were already discussed in the through the report. So I've included a lot of the information here. We did have some enrollment adjustments that affect our grants for student needs. We do have teacher qualification and the experience grant, which is reflects teacher demographics that had a change in the amount of funding, and it also drives a bit of the cost savings that we had on teaching salaries. What the teacher qualification and experience grant does is adjust the basically adjust for against a benchmark salary across the province. And then it adjusts to what we are actually paying our teachers. And then we had adjustments in the teacher attrition that was used in the current year. And hopefully we'll see some changes in that in the upcoming budget. We did have increased in revenues related to the Indigenous Education Grant to reflect higher enrollment in some secondary courses that provides additional funding for Indigenous studies. We had some changes on our grants related to transportation where there was a lower than a met than expected revenue flow, simply because the, it uses prior years' costs as as one of the metrics or a variable in the grant calculation. And so that has reduced some of that grant. Slightly lower international student enrollment in the current era was reported. We increased provision for the occasional teachers because we customarily have overspending in that area, but we're somewhat cautious on just continuously increasing the provision in that area because it would have an impact on our ability to to provide additional supports to students. And quite often there are offsetting savings within the instructional. And then we did have, we talked a bit about the extended day program. And and that it had been, it would have been used to offset the expected deficit from the infant toddler preschool program. And that's going to change. So I'll carry on here. A few other items, the increased facility department operating costs, portable relocations, increased costs related to natural gas, and just the other needs to, that we had encountered from the maintenance side. We are continuing to use funds for the acquisition of minor tangible capital assets and our deferred capital contributions. The deferred capital contributions and amortization expense that both decrease in that. If you recall, I had talked about the remaining service life review that had occurred in the prior year, but had an effect on the current year. They are really offsetting that just, there's a revenue reduction and a corresponding expense reduction. And then we continue to anticipate the use of accumulated surplus to support capital investments, particularly portables. So now we get to the significant items in our updated forecast. One of the more significant items is the reduced compensation costs resulting from the labor actions. We had strike savings of approximately 15 million dollars. So that's where services were withdrawn and therefore we did not pay compensation for those days. The ministry will customarily ask us to report on those savings. And if there are some incremental costs that we incurred to manage those strike activities and labor actions, they would adjust our grants accordingly. So we expect that the grants will be reduced by about 15 million dollars and corresponding with approximately 15 million dollars in savings, probably about half million dollars more savings on the compensation side than grant reduction. Then the, I guess, one of the areas is also our priorities and partnerships funds, which is being reduced both on revenues and matching expenses. One of the challenges for with the, both the labor actions and then the COVID pandemic has had a direct ability for us to actually make those investments and and spend the money as it was intended to be spent. These particular grants are very specific on how they're to be used and though, and the expenses are matched with the revenues. So the inability to spend has had an impact of savings, but also reduced revenue in an equal amount. CFO Carson mentioned about the extended day program and childcare programs, where we are going to be seeing a significant loss of revenue in those programs because basically the, for instance, the childcare program is, will be closed for a good period of time. And in our forecast, we assumed it would be for six months, so commencing in March. And so that is one area that we seen some reductions. The extended day program similarly has revenue loss. And then we also had some of the labor actions that had an impact on those particular the days where services were withdrawn. We are not generating revenue for those days. Our costs didn't decrease in, as CFO Carson noted, in direct relation to those revenue losses. So it has generated a combined 5.2 million dollar deficit for those areas. But we are continuing to look at it because one of the things that I understand now is that the ECEs have been providing support for core day programming. So we're going to get a better handle on on how the support should be, those costs should be assigned between general instruction and the extended day. We also had a reduction in rental income and miscellaneous revenue. So for instance, we're not charging our third-party operators any, any lease rents. And similarly, our facility rental revenue has gone down because of all the cancellations as a result of the ministry direction to close and public health requirements. So we've seen that. And another significant item was in the revised estimates. I had assumed that we would receive a 1.5 million dollar revenue increase during the current year. However, that is appearing to be unlikely. And that related to the former benefit plans that the district had, where the carrier actually has now refunded to us the deposit accounts. Basically, it's a benefit plan surplus, but we have to work with our the unions to determine how the money is allocated between the district and the unions, and that's based on the ministry directives. So with that, that concludes, that concludes the the slides for the presentation on the forecast. And as I mentioned, we do anticipate that slight increase in the deficit in this forecast, but we're also hopeful that it will be less than what I'm showing here. We're continuing to work with the departments to try to get a better handle on what those costs are going to be for the rest of the year because there's been a lot of uncertainty as we've gone forward in these projections. So with that, I'll turn it back to CFO Carson and and then also for any questions.
Madam Chair, I really don't have anything to to add. Kevin has has explained it well, that there is some uncertainty. There, in some areas where we have made assumptions that people will be able to expend some of their unspent budgets. I don't think it'll happen. There are some areas where we might intend to, but the supply chain just won't let us. And we are monitoring things carefully when we look at next year's budget pressures and we look at this year's deficit. We are trying to look at the timing of some of these expenditures to make sure we're ready to return to school. So I think, Madam Chair, there, there are some accounting decisions that will be made over the course of August and September as well, that will have, have an impact on it. And when I say that, they are valid and they're all acceptable. We are, we are generally conservative in our accounting treatments. That is, to make sure we don't push things out that don't need to be pushed out and that we account for them immediately. But where there's an opportunity to follow generally accepted accounting principles in our, in our practice, we'll certainly take a look at that along with the auditors.
Okay, thank you very much CFO and thank you very much, Kevin, for walking us through the presentation as well. I will now turn it to any questions that the folks have. If you, again, reminder, raise your hands. I have Chris, sorry, trustee Boothby and Alice on the list. So trustee Boothby, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. I've got one overall question, then a few little questions on the memo. So I'm wondering, overall, given where we are and given that we don't have a lot of information about what kind of expenses that we're going to be incurring next year because we really don't have a plan about next year yet from the minister. So I'm wondering, have we heard anything about any additional flexibility that we're going to be given or have already been given to redeploy sweatered dollars to where we see fit to put those? And one of the big buckets that I'm thinking about is transportation.
Madam Chair, transportation isn't necessarily sweetered. So we have factored in the savings that we've achieved, as we noted in the report. OSTA has been paying operators 85% of their rates through April, May, and June. So those savings have been reflected and they are being used to offset. Again, we've got a lot of pluses and minuses, but those savings are part of what is offsetting the loss of revenue from, for example, we're waiving rents for our tenants and childcare operators as well as the lost revenue from EDP.
So were there any other sweetered saved monies? Like again, Kevin pointed out that there's 14, 15 million dollars savings with the, the strike actions. And typically, I understand that that gets clawed back by the government, but are we hearing any indications that we may be able to keep and redeploy those kinds of money?
Madam Chair, it's part of the discussion. The form, the actual form of how that would occur has not been determined. For example, the ministry may take those dollars back, but then add some of them to the GSNs with, they may use that as a source of funding for supplemental funding next year. We haven't heard anything that would lead us to believe that they're going to leave those in our hands. I think they will be looking for some measure of control and direction over it. The, they have indicated, and they did indicate to us, for example, when we were looking at providing the technology solutions, boards were strongly encouraged to look at their various areas and where necessary, redeploy the investments. And we did that with respect to the hotspots and where some of the supports that we were able to provide to ONFI and the other areas. With the partnership funds, which used to be called the local, the education program, other grants. The ministry is of two minds. They have certainly said to us that we were encouraged to find ways to expend those dollars. Those are specific program or project-related dollars that come to the board. We routinely will look at ways to expend those. And where, where it's appropriate, we will identify existing board expenditures that meet the terms of the grant. Make sure that we take advantage of that and don't return the funds to the province. I think that they were not prepared to totally loosen loosen that. And part of it is because the source of the funds that come to us are tied up with the government's own financial reporting. And I believe that we will probably see them take those dollars back. But that amount will be part of the pool that they use in helping to respond to next year's problem. But there has been no announcement to that effect yet.
Okay, thank you CFO for the responses.
No, I have a couple of other questions. On page three of the, the memo 52, and sorry, I'm not looking on one that actually has folio numbers, but the, the bit says it also provides funding to cover the ministry's contribution to employee life and health benefit trusts commencing in 2019, 2020. And that's part of the teacher qualification and experience grant line, explanation line. And I'm, I'm just wondering and hoping and wanting us to carry that in future budgets and future updates in a a specific line item because I'm concerned that we actually get fully compensated for that because it is supposed to be just a flow-through and that's how it was put forth to boards that that would be a flow-through. So, so, so that's an ask. My question on that page is a bit further down. It talks about two significant changes in the funding. And one of them was special education allocation that was decreased by half a million. And that funding was to be used to assist with the costs of equipment. So my question on that is, it was my understanding through some of the memos that I've been seeing that we've actually been needing to deploy additional equipment to some of our special education learners. And I'm just really curious why we're getting any money from our special education portfolio clawed back.
If I can, Madam Chair, two pieces. We'll, we'll take a look at how we disclose that benefits. It's when we look at matching it to It's when we look at matching it to funding, that's where the province has chosen to put those dollars in the absence of any other line item. With respect to the funding for employee benefits, we have, for the most part, been fully funded for it. Where the difference of opinion between the ministry and ourselves comes up with is they also made reductions to the existing employee benchmarks in other areas. We have consistently said that those benchmarks never funded benefits properly in the first place. It shouldn't have been reduced. But the actual amounts that we are transferring over to the trusts is essentially covered a hundred percent. With respect to the funding change, I'll let Kevin speak, and I didn't see Peter on the on the participant list. Based on based on the most current information we have, with those CIA dollars, if we're not able to get that equipment in people's hands, those CIA dollars will remain as part of the special education budget. I think there's there have been discussions about which equipment we're getting out, which met the specific CIA definition. New equipment versus where we upgraded existing equipment or had to deploy other items that might not have met the CIA task to help support learners. But if Superintendent Simmons isn't here, we can make sure we have that for the next meeting. And I do see him.
Good evening and through you, Madam Chair. So part of that is definitely enrollment related. But we have had a conversation just this morning, in fact, regarding the use of CIA funds to replace any any items that get broken, including not just technology equipment, but also physical equipment. So there is going to be some flexibility in our conversation this morning. The representatives from Special Education Branch emphasized over and over again being flexible when it comes to some of this stuff. So we're confident that we're going to be able to still even upon a return, be able to ensure that our students who require technology or physical equipment will have access to it.
Okay, thank you for that. The next.
Trustee Boothby, I just want to do a time check. You only have about thirty seconds left in your three minute time. If you need to be put back on the list, I'm happy to do that to you.
Okay, I'll make this question quick. And so this is on page five of that budget where we talk about international students. And I see that the updated forecast reflects revenue of eleven million and that we've had reduced enrollment. And I know that the province gives us some funding for the students, but I'm also wondering through OCNET, do we think we're going to have to give money back to some of these students? Did we send any of them home? Or have they been? Have we been asked to change the the fee that these international students have paid and give refunds because they haven't physically been in school? And I will go back on the list. I have two more questions.
Madam Chair, I can, I know Mr. Best has been developing an update for OCNET board members. To date, I think we've only we've we've received less than a dozen requests for refunds. And we have not yet made a decision or OCNET hasn't made a decision as to what, if any portion of fees they might be refunding. Our international students who have returned home have been able to participate in distance learning with us. And we have a number that have continued locally as well. So it shouldn't it's not expected to have a big impact on their two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty financial results. And consequently, it it won't result in a reduction in what they're able to provide the OCDSB with support.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, trustee Ellis.
Thank you. My question was on transportation and it was answered and I had and the answer, the questions I had around spec ed funding. Well, not quite expect. Let me ask that one question then. For the sweetered revenues that we get for special education, are we still receiving all of them? Have there been savings? Less expenses in that area? Just a sort of an overview of the impact of COVID nineteen on this year's budget around sweatered spec ed funding.
Madam Chair, in general, the savings we've seen have been related to transportation. You know, that that fifteen percent reduction essentially. We are seeing, and one of the things we factored in is the reduction in the need for replacement staff, occasional teachers, occasional EAs. Obviously, that is down significantly from where it had been. There the staff costs are our largest single cost. There's some reduction in supplies, but nothing terribly significant there. Those those reductions in costs will contribute to us being slightly slightly. How am I saying this right? It'll be it will be over our funding by a lesser amount than we had budgeted. But those are the main sources, the the savings in the replacement staffing and in transportation, but the transportation sits in the transportation envelope.
Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, trustee Ellis. Are there any other questions and further questions from anyone else? Otherwise, we'll go back to second time speakers, trustee Boothby.
Thank you. And my other last question was just answered. So thank you.
No further speakers to this item. Just checking. Anyone does have any questions? Go in. Going. Go on. All right. So we'll move on then in the agenda. So I believe we've had all the reports, so I just don't know if there's, I guess. Do we have item?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, we do have a presentation that outlines where we are in the budget development cycle. And we can provide a little further information with your permission. We'll go through that fairly quickly. But we really would like to invite comments from the committee about some of the next steps that we're considering. So if people could have that in the back of their minds during this part, that would be great.
So over to you.
And I'm not sure Sandy, who has control of the screen, so.
Okay, I'll get this from beginning. Okay, so are we doing the screen share?
Yes, Claire, we should.
Okay, I'm I'll do the screen share.
Thank you.
Oh, now where is it? Okay, so sorry for the little bit of technical challenge here. So just following the memo, we've prepared this brief summary in the PowerPoint on our budget development cycle. And we had discussed this had earlier presentations where we have our planning in November, December, we move forward. Oh.
Kevin, sorry to interrupt you, but I'm wondering if you might be able to actually share your screen. It seems like you've got just the way you have it open.
I have it on my screen here. Okay, I'll give it another go.
Kevin?
Yes.
The bottom screen on the right, you see one hundred and fourteen percent if you reduce that. Bottom right.
Bottom right. Okay, I'm trying to see. Okay. Okay, actually, I think that might be sharing on the wrong screen.
Kevin, if you could put it in presentation mode.
I thought I had it in presentation mode. It's on presentation mode on one of the screens.
Not the one we're seeing.
Okay.
That's better. It's still not in presentation mode, though.
Okay, I'm trying to get it back into presentation mode. Sorry about this.
No, that's okay. I just didn't want you to go on too long until so that we could all see.
While Kevin's working on that, it is something that I think it's important. We note developing a budget is very much a team event. And I I neglected to say at the beginning, aside from all of the thinking and the analyzing people are doing, Kevin and his staff have done a great job of trying to get us the best possible information under some challenging circumstances. And we will obviously try to make sure that we get you the best possible information as we move forward. But I think Kevin, if we can go to the budget development cycle now.
Okay, I'm gonna give it a go again. Is it working?
There you go. You're on the forecast now if we just move ahead.
Okay. Wow, thank you. Okay, so here we are at the annual budget development cycle. And as I had mentioned, that it's a full year exercise to encompassing budget planning and then also the reporting. So in November, we look at our audited financial statements from the previous year and start planning budgets for the subsequent year. We update our revised estimates, the revised estimates in December. And that's basically looking at the budget that was approved in June and making changes to reflect known areas such as what our teacher demographics are, what our what our enrollment actually is, and then any other known significant issues that may have come along, such as new priorities and partnerships, funds, grants. From November to March, we commence a review of our enrollment projections for the upcoming year and we establish trends and and identify opportunities to start where we might need investments, where we might have internal savings that can be reprioritized to meet emerging needs. In March, we actually formally do the academic staffing. It's done in March because we have timelines to ensure that teachers are in position and ready for the start of the upcoming school year. Usually in April, we get the information on the grants for student needs. And that is a key information that we really do need to know what our funding is because that will allow us to identify how much we can invest in our new additions. And we normally present our staff recommended budget in May. And then and commence some debates, we receive delegations and ultimately we look to have the budget approved by the board in June in compliance with the Education Act that requires the board have a balanced budget no later than June thirtieth. And then during the July through September, we start getting ready for the new school year allocating by the board the approved budget into the financial system so we can manage it and make sure that we're we start our reporting correctly in the as we go along. And so we do that all while looking at our strategic priorities and and trying to be a, you know, for instance, and socially responsible and exercise good stewardship of the resources.
Just before we get going, I think it's a good time to highlight normally as we move from November to March to April, we can focus our numbers and we get more accurate. This year, as we have moved from month to month, in fact, the range of the of the possible outcomes has gotten wider. And that's one of our challenges and why we are not in a position to recommend a budget this evening and why we have concerns about where we will go forward with the next stage of our budget. I think we are we all recognize that even though the ministry has indicated they are considering changes to the June thirtieth deadline, what they had originally said was they weren't changing the deadline. If boards needed more time, let them know and take it. Now that it is the twenty-sixth of May and boards don't have funding information, they have talked about formally revising those deadlines. We may have to look hard at a process that allows us to approve perhaps something that we would call a provisional budget, approving portions of the budget that would allow us to make sure that we had key staff in place at the end of August and beginning of September to support students and to support learning directly. There are some of the things that we would be talking about for the purpose of the twenty 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 twenty-one budget that are not as crucial and that we may in fact be able to wait and consider the approval in the fall. So I just think it's it's important to to identify that the cycle this year is is significantly different. If we move to the next page, I think the again, we just wanted to remind people that our funding is really based on our provincial funding, the grants for student needs gives us nearly ninety percent of our overall revenues. And we I think we provided that information to members of the committee earlier this year in a variety of ways, the foundation grant, the special, which is the per pupil amount tied to that generates funding for teaching staff and ECEs and some of the support staff, special purpose grants, the spec ed grant, the ops and maintenance grants, and all of those other categories that that you have seen in those documents. We do receive other provincial and federal grants outside of the GSN. And in our case, one of the large components of that is the revenues associated with extended day in childcare. The ministry has continued to be clear. They have a requirement that school boards submit balanced budgets. In the last few years, they have indicated that they would accept budgets that contain the deficit of no more than one percent of their GSN allocation, roughly the GSN allocation. If in fact, you do submit that, it is not subject to ministry approval. But we're now required to provide what's called an in-year deficit elimination plan. That's a plan that shows how those items that create the deficit will be eliminated or resolved within a two-year period. We have indicated to the province that we believe strongly that the one percent is a good number. Having said that, a deficit involves using reserves. We create reserves for the rainy day. And the coming year is in fact a rainy day. And so we will continue to lobby the province that if they do not provide us with the funding with the full funding that may be required to meet some of these needs, that we may in fact have to take a look at accessing some of those reserves for specific purposes. And we'll wrestle with that as we go through the next few weeks. Again, there's all sorts of examples, but we know for instance, that our need to replenish and renew the Chromebook fleet in addition to the dollars that we have for the normal cyclical renewal, that there's going to have to be additional dollars for for Chromebooks that will may not come back to us in working order. Or they may have more breakdowns even if they stay with students. And so B N L T has been looking at that and we're looking at the budget pressure that's going to create. The next page, I think summer is really summarizing what we've talked about. I think it's it's important, though, for us to we try not to get into all of the gruesome details of of the budget. It's like that old analogy when people talk about making sausage, but we really do need as much information as we can for the province. The funding in it in all of those broad categories, it really comes down to demographic information. So it comes down to staff demographic information, their qualifications, the departments they're working in, their their status, full time, regular part. Their qualifications, the departments they're working in, their their status, full-time, regular part-time, casual. It also impacts student demographics that has an impact on not just the basic grant, but all of the others. Everything from special education to English as a second language, French as a second language and a number of categories. We really, in order to calculate those numbers. Properly, need to have that detailed tool. In its absence, we can make assumptions and the assumptions are usually not bad. But every time we have assumptions, we widen that that range of variability. And so not knowing the amount of GSNs in itself. Introduces a risk we normally don't have to deal with when we establish the staff recommended budget. The next page that we have available for you is just a reminder. Of where we were with the budget that had been developed for 2019, 2020. In effect. We slightly overexpend in special education by about 6%. Members of the committee will remember that. If if I were making a recommendation, it's good when we can keep it to the lower end of 5 to 10%. There were times in the past when we were up as high as 20. And I know that I think I saw Mr. Kirwin's name. Members of the Budget Committee coming from CAC are are always quick to tell us it's not an over expenditure. It's an underfunding question. And we know that and. But we wanted to make sure people understood that when we look at budget pressures, some of the budget pressures we are seeing. Is as we try to meet the the increasing needs that we're seeing in students as they come to us. Transportation. Again, this was the budget. It doesn't reflect those 15% savings. But the the challenges that we were all facing with respect to driver availability haven't changed. And we. In the latest round of contracts that were negotiated, we saw necessary increases in costs. So transportation will continue to be. Overfunding facilities in the we've talked about it. We continue to see pressures on our aging building on the on our. On the extent of our buildings and for 2019, 2020. We had to also build in additional expansion of our fleet of portables. Extended day in childcare prior to the pandemic. Generates a small surplus. So this was really to give you a a sense. Nearly two thirds of our budget is goes directly to. Instruction. If you add special education into it, you're you're getting close to 80% of our budget. As we, the next page, I think is trying to share with you some of the assumptions we've tried to make as we move forward. We started with the assumption that we would be using accumulated surplus up to that 1% compliance limit. We were not. At no point were we planning to present a totally balanced budget. As we look at emerging needs and opportunities, one of the things that we're committed to is staff. Is looking at those areas where we can serve those needs by reallocating existing dollars. Every year we look at areas within the budget and we find dollars that weren't expended. Or they may have been expended and we didn't see the results we wanted. And while our metrics on that are not what we would like to see. We certainly know that there are some areas where we can reallocate resources and that is part of our toolkit as we move forward for 2020, 2021. Inflationary cost pressures, we were seeing those throughout the development of the budget. We've identified the fact at an earlier meeting. While the price of natural gas reduces, we will see the impact of the carbon tax. And that will continue to be a cost pressure for us as we move forward. What we are still not sure of, and there are two schools of thought, as we come out of. This and we begin to see the reopening of the supply chain. There will be some areas where there are shortages of goods and where there will be. Higher than anticipated cost increases. In some areas, we may see lower costs just because of a result in reduced demand, but we think that will take longer to filter through to us. A key one, and even though it's the fourth bullet, is probably one that is always in the background as we have these discussions. We are trying very hard to make sure that we are mindful of the commitments we made in the plan. To the desired outcomes in creating each of those three cultures. An important one for us and one that we have built into the. Budget is that for the most part, the incremental costs from contract negotiations are substantially supported by ministry funding. Members of the committee are aware that. One of the key issues for us was the funding at the level of 23 to 1 in the secondary panel. We are awaiting the final calculations from the province. As people know, the. The agreed upon contract does have us moving towards that target of 23 to 1, but we did not receive additional funding. After you've been doing this for a while, you look at things differently. The good news is that that reduction and that change. Is slightly better than if we had been required to continue. Along the path that had been identified last year prior to the negotiation of the collective agreements. The final piece is that we we want to make sure that we do have. A well-defined timeline to approve the budget that will allow thoughtful consideration by the members of the Budget Committee. The trustees and to allow for input where we can get it from our various stakeholders. Like the next page, Kevin, please. Here we go. I think it's important, Madam Chair, we've talked about secondary classes. The enrollment growth, as we've said, is a is a wild card. Usually. We are at this point, we're able to hone in and perfect our numbers, those projections that we developed in November. At the moment. We're we're not as comfortable as we normally are in May with the with the results. We have, we know that there were boards that. Have taken the approach of just a and across the board reduction in enrollment, 1%, 2%. We we have not taken that approach. Again, in the interest of stability, we have. Put aside dollars to offset the loss of the enrollment, but we are not at this time. Recommending staff decreases because of those changes in enrollment and that's in keeping with our. Commitment to stability and to supporting students in what's going to be a very difficult school year. The timing of the GSN funding right now. We understand the tremendous pressure that the Ministry of Education staff are feeling, but we also know it's tied up with. The overall government discussion of of the current year and as you know, there was no. Provincial budget either. So we are, we would hope to see the GSN soon. What we heard from the deputy minister on a couple of occasions is that. Their hope is that they would be able to issue what she called a status quo. Grant for student need regulation, basically. Last year's terms plus the changes related to the collective agreements with a few minor changes. And there may have to be amendments to that GSN as the year goes on. The other thing that we are looking at is the presumed changes that we're going to see in cleaning standards. The change in what learning looks like and having to be able to provide increased home-based learning. Whether that's on a system-wide basis or in a school-by-school basis. If we continue to have outbreaks and as always, the evolving timeline and deliverables. What I want to share with you on page 15 of the of the presentation that Kevin put together. We wanted to give you an idea of the sorts of discussions that we as staff have been having. First two lines of the budget were dealt with as part of the academic staffing and those. That additional expenditure of $8.8 million has been built into our calculation. That increase in academic staffing reflected the enrollment changes that we were looking at as well as the need for additional specialized classes. And those decisions have been made and are being implemented as we pursue the staffing process. The next are areas that will be part of our recommended budget, whether it comes in phases. For example, if we didn't have the COVID issue, if we didn't have. The uncertainty around funding, we would be recommending a substantial increase in the number of educational assistance. We know, for example, that we added educational assistance during. 2019, 2020 school year to serve. The increasing demands that we were seeing in the regular classrooms as well as the increasing needs of students. Superintendent Simmons and his staff have looked ahead and have identified. A need for another 30 or so that would be part of that 78. Whether or not we're able to do that will depend on what we see in funding. But we see that as a key priority in serving students, especially if it's a return to the regular classroom. Environment or our new classroom environment. Next, we've been building our numbers on the assumption that we need to be prepared to address some. Funding challenges in central departments. In program and learning, we have identified the need for additional support through. Superintendent Tuas' area and those were approved in academic staffing. We know. That we had identified a plan to enhance. The organization and business and learning technology and technologies to provide a specific security branch. To help reinforce the human infrastructure that's required when we're supporting. What's probably the second largest network in all of Eastern Ontario. And certainly across such a large geography. And when you consider the likelihood that we are supporting. Technology and learning, not just in 150 schools. But in 50,000 homes, you see the need for that support. We've also identified within human resources and financial services, the need to replace some positions that had been eliminated. Over the past few years when we were looking at making budget reductions. Those are in some cases, and and I'll use finance as the example, that is a decision that doesn't have to be made today. If as we move forward in our discussions, I'll be quite open. As we look to how do we triage and how do we make some of these decisions? Some of those are the kinds of things that we as senior staff will say. Perhaps that'll come forward in a second phase when in September, when we see what's happened to enrollments. What have we received in terms of GSNs and what have we seen in terms of. Government and O P H demands with respect to what new classrooms will look like. One number that we do know for sure, we had identified the need for an additional million dollars in facilities. That would allow us to enhance our custodial staffing. At the moment in elementary schools, with only one exception, I think all of our elementary schools only have one. Custodian on duty during the day. Secondary has two. We know there will be an increased demand for cleaning during the daytime. And enhanced cleaning protocols as well as the evening work. So we began. With the assumption that we would need to invest approximately a million dollars there. Across the broad description of equity, diversity and mental health, we have looked at ways to provide additional staff. That can support those directions. Some of it will require new dollars. Some of it will be a redeployment of existing dollars. And with all of these, we will be meeting Superintendent McCoy and others will be meeting with the federations. To take a look at how we can make the best use of super support for student fundings. To support these initiatives and others. The other thing that we have been looking at and trustees will remember. We had anticipated. The need to make improvements to the ELA wage rate. We've also identified the need to potentially increase. ELA staffing if we see the increase in EDP enrollment and that's a wild card. So we may need to need to wait on that. Page 16 moves to a different kind of an area. We know that as. The technology market is changing as more and more acquisitions are made and competition is reduced. We see changes in the licensing models. More and more, we no longer buy software. We're paying annual software costs. Which increase even when we take advantage of provincial agreements. Trustees in particular are aware of the change to the a new student information system. To be effective September 2021, but it means that we have to acquire the license in the coming year. So in the broad area of technology renewal, which includes everything from additional Chromebooks. Perhaps some additional hotspots and increases in fees and licenses. We're looking at the need for expenditures of over 3.3 million dollars. In our central departments, human resources. Curriculum services, continuing education, facilities, equities, we always see. Increases in supply costs. We believe that there needs to be some redeployment of existing dollars. And some new dollars made available. We see are seeing an increase of half a million dollars. On the assumption that it would be a normal school year. You'll remember that we continue to see the need to increase that budget for occasional teachers. Part of it is based on the fact that as we see enrollment, as we're back in enrollment growth, you see increased numbers of teachers. So. There is a reasonable, there is a need for that increase. We've already talked about the inflationary pressure we're seeing on natural gas. Worker safety and insurance. Much of that pressure is an accounting adjustment that really isn't known until the actuaries have a chance to look at our. Our experience in 2019, 20, look at the in-year experience in 2020, 21. And then we are required to make an adjustment at the end of the year. So based on our the experience that we've been seeing, we are identifying about three quarters of a million dollars. We're showing this as a negative expense and that's the international student administrative fee. As the number of international students is reduced, we will see a reduction in tuition fees. But we will also see a reduction in the clawback to the province of approximately $2 million. On top of all of that, our budget planning had included. An amount of dollars that we were calling COVID-19 response, 2.2 million dollars. That's without any further investment by the province. We believe. That even if we were to come back to school in some form that approaches. A normal classroom, there will be additional expenses involved and there'll be in all departments. So we wanted to make sure that we set aside that kind of provision that we didn't over commit dollars elsewhere. The work that we're doing now and the work that we will be doing by June the 8th is to try to determine. If we can reduce that on level of uncertainty. If we're not able to reduce the level of uncertainty. You may see us moving dollars from specific recommendations into that COVID provision. We would. See ourselves providing that preliminary information in June, either at the meeting of the 8th or the 15th. And we would see ourselves seeking approval of the board of what we would call a staff recommended provisional budget. That would allow us to gain approval so that human resources could begin. Recruitment and hiring along with the departments of staff that are key to have. In our buildings in August and September to serve students. With a second half of the budget. With a second half of the budget that would be addressed either in September or October, depending on when we see the results of the GSNs from the province of Ontario as well as what our enrollment looks like in terms of students that are actually registered and attending school, whether it's virtually or in person. So Madam Chair, I know I've rambled a bit. I wanted to provide some further context, and we would like to, again, receive some initial reaction to the, whether the broad directions are the correct ones, and then get a sense of the committee's preference, and we'll take that back to Agenda Planning Committee and obviously to the Chair of the Budget Committee with a recommendation for a revised timeline for the rest of the budget process. So Madam Chair, I'll stop there. If there are questions, we'll be pleased to respond and we'll be listening to the debate. Thank you.
This is Carson and Manager Gardner. I believe the first, I have a speaker's list, and I believe first up is Trustee Lyra. Then we have Trustee Penny, Campbell and Ellis. And I just, just before we start, just a reminder that we are in Committee of the Whole rules, so we have three minutes each. I will be timing just to keep this meeting on track. And then if we need to go to a second speaker's list, we will. But over to you, Trustee Lyra.
I'd like to open by thanking the staff for all of the work they put into the presentation. I do not feel as though we can have a meaningful consultation with the community with the time we have left in the current, in the current budget plan. I don't like pushing off half of the budget until the fall. I would much rather see us extend the budget plan, the budget process into July and have everything done and ready to implement over, over August as opposed to pushing half of it off until September, October, because things that get pushed tend to continue to get pushed. We, as a, as a board, said that we were going to revisit our strategic, the, the front page of our strategic plan in the fall, and that never happened. We never went back to look at the, the language at the bottom. And I worry that the, the things that we push off tend to get left by the wayside, and I would much rather have our entire budget done earlier rather than later. I'm curious to see what my, my colleagues have to say. But I'm of the opinion that we write a letter to the Ministry saying we don't have the time that we need meaningfully consult the community. We don't have the time that we need to meaningfully to build a budget because this has been delayed so much because we don't have our GSN pieces. We usually have two and a half, three months to do this, and we're trying to cram it all into a month and then push it off. I would much rather see us try and do it in two, two and a half months. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lyra. I don't know if there's commentary from staff?
No, not really, Madam Chair. I think, you know, that, that is the kind of discussion that I think members of the committee need to have. We, we have it ourselves. We do believe that there are some of these initiatives, just like academic staffing, though, that we should consider approving mainly because of the uncertainty of, you know, if, if I, if I knew that we could have it approved July fifteenth, that's, and that's, and we're not going past that, that would help. But we don't know, we, we're not even sure whether that will be a reasonable date. So we are trying to make sure that we are ready. But we'll listen to, we'll, we'll take that into account as well as the comments of the others of the committee.
Over to, was that it then, Trustee Lyra?
So I was, sorry, I was of the opinion this was a discussion, or it was my understanding this was a discussion, and my, my thoughts are I'd rather have this pushed into July than pushed into October. Thank you.
All right, Trustee Penny?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I'm just wondering, I just want to be very clear if, in fact, we do not receive the GSN, will trustees still be asked to pass a budget?
Madam Chair, we, if the ministry will, will need to update its regulation requiring submission of the budget by, by a target date. They are mindful of the work that's required to buy, buy school boards to make these decisions, some of which will have decisions far more difficult than, than ourselves. I think they will take a look at, I think they are committed to getting that information out to us. I would, I really do think we'll see it in the next two to three weeks, and then they will set a delay in the date for final approval. A lot of it is hypothetical and, and some of it will be in the details, but I, I do not believe they will demand that any board submit a budget in the absence of information about funding.
Okay, thank you.
Was that it then, Trustee Penny?
Yes.
Okay, then Trustee Campbell?
Hi there. Thank you for the presentation. Just start with a question, I guess. The two point two million international student administrative fee, could you, I missed part of it perhaps. Can you characterize that further for me, please? Is that the provincial clawback or is that the administrative fee that we pay back to OCNET?
Madam Chair, I believe it's a combination of both.
Okay, so the administrative, from the previous report, I could see the administrative for last year, the administrative fee we paid was four point three million. So this two point two million reduction assumption is effectively a forecast of how many international students?
It's tied to it. I think right now we are projecting a reduction in, in international students for finance purposes of about thirty percent, thirty to thirty-five percent. I believe the, the actual projection may not be quite that low, but we are, for financial purposes, we're trying to be conservative.
Okay, great. That's really helpful. That gives me, I guess the figure is probably in, in that ballpark. Now, when I look at some of the other information there, I'm not seeing, but maybe it's there and I, I'm missing it. And you had alluded to it perhaps in your opener, or you both had, that there are caution, maybe wise with respect to EDP uptake as well, and that there were real risks associated with that. So I'm seeing the caution here expressed with respect to international students, but I'm also seeing, you know, extra funding for additional ECs for new kindergarten classes, ease to meeting, increasing whatever, are we, is EDP increased enrollment? Are we actually, so what I recall from the opener was risk associated with international student revenue, risk associated with EDP enrollment revenues. But what I'm, I'm not necessarily, I've seen caution with respect to one, not necessarily caution with respect to the other. So I was wondering if I could get a comment?
Madam Chair, it's, it is a tricky area. When we have developed this budget, because, because of the unknowns, we chose not to change the initial projections for EDP enrollment. And so what we are saying is that the, the ELA numbers are a variable cost. So if we see the increase in enrollment, then we would need to increase the number of ELAs. And so that's a variable cost, and it's one that if the enrollment doesn't appear, we won't make that investment. A part of it is a, is a cost because it reflects the cost, the salary increase that was approved. EDP by itself is a business area that we are taking a long, hard look at. Superintendent Duan and Ms. Seer are, are looking at it as we look at the guidance from the province. When we look at the guidelines they're giving childcare operators that are running these, the current emergency childcare centers, you can see that there's going to be a change in ratios. You can see that there will be a change in costs, and we will need to take a look at that entire delivery model, and that may have, that may end up being dealt with differently in the budget as well because it is a risk area that we're wrestling with right now.
Okay, yeah, so I, I guess, I, I think I'm aligned with staff or what that, for what that's worth with respect to being conservatively cautious with respect to these two relatively important in terms of, you know, marginal millions we have to play with these two revenue sources. And I guess I would just look for some sort of caution and whatever is proposed eventually as, as, as a budget. My concern, I guess, we lost five million in what, let's call it six months of EDP with COVID to date projected for, or anyway, projected for this year end. I mean, if we are in a perfect financial storm through, you know, a second wave starting next fall, whoever, who knows? And with, you know, similar on-again, off-again provisions, a, a, a public concern about sending kids places, maybe reduced occupancy orders, who knows? I, I think all, all the risk is that we won't see the numbers that we're used to seeing. And so I'd be concerned if our projections were for full EDP. And that, I, I would find it difficult to see how that would be a conservative forecast. So I'll just put that out there. I totally, in terms of brief comments, and I don't know what my time is like, I just wanted to answer the, the superintendent's questions in terms of guidance or I guess my opinion on what perhaps should be, could be, should be, could be looked at.
But eight seconds.
Please put me back on the list.
Okay, thanks. I'll, I'll put you back on the list, Trustee Campbell. Over to Trustee Ellis.
Thank you. Just, I'm very supportive of the flexibility that you're trying to build into the budget to deal with COVID nineteen. And I was grateful to hear that, that one percent use of surplus, you're considering that going beyond that if necessary. I would be very supportive of not holding ourselves to that one percent going over. I think it'll be important to meet the needs, the many needs that we'll see whether we open up or whether we don't. Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Trustee Ellis. Trustee Lyra, I have you back on the list, I believe.
Yep. I wanted to open by echoing what my colleague-
But sorry, Trustee, Trustee Evans, sorry, it's as a second time, I just see that Trustee Bell has raised her hand. So sorry, I'll go to Trustee Bell first, and then Trustee Evans, or sorry, Trustee Lyra, and Trustee Campbell.
And could you please put me on the list, Madam Chair? I can't raise my hand at the moment.
For sure. Happy to do that. So we'll go to Trustee Bell, Trustee Scott, Trustee Lyra, Trustee Campbell.
So thank you CFO Carson again, and I just wanted to reiterate again the, the issue that I brought up at the beginning, which was when it comes to mental health support, what I see right now within the column is an additional four point something. Is there consideration being given to increasing that, that number? And would that be something that you would include in the allocation for the COVID, COVID nineteen response? And maybe if you could speak to, I know that there's a lot of unknowns, but for, for that amount, two point two, are there, are there specific line items that we would be looking at? Thank you.
Madam Chair, there's, there's three or four areas. We, when we started, we were looking at additional mental health supports. If we are recommending more than that, there are a couple of different funding sources. We will need to talk to the federations about how we use the additional funds that were provided as a result of collective bargaining. That would be a potential source. There are some other areas inside our own dollars that we might reallocate. In terms of what we thought that two point two would cover, you know, part of it was everything from some increased costs that schools themselves might bear within, within our own supply costs, to be, to be frank, in facilities. If we have to bear additional costs for cleaning supplies and PPE, we're covering those. We're not looking for it, but we really are assuming those dollars would need to be available so we could deploy them whether for the full year or in response to individual school outbreaks. The, the practice in some European countries and what we had seen from some of the US advice from the CDC was that if you have either an identified outbreak or some of the stricter ones, if you have a student or a staff member who's identified with COVID nineteen, then you shut that school down for a period, I think it was five days. You'd need to be able to react very quickly to ensure the continuity of learning so you wouldn't have lost learning, or at least you could minimize it. We wanted to make sure we would have dollars available to help respond to that. One of the things we discovered this year was, I think we knew it, but the numbers came into focus when Superintendent Lehman and Ms. Owens and others started to develop the plan to develop internet access for our kids and families that while they may have access through a, through their cell phones, real reliable internet access for some of the things that we're expecting people to do, whether it's video work or the other, is a different kettle of fish. And so those are some of the things that we're looking at. We know there will be others as the planning continues, but we wanted to make sure those dollars would be available for that kind of response. It could be contractual services with other agencies if we need them to help us as well.
Great, thank you. And then one last comment question is echoing what Lyra has brought forth on timelines and ensuring that we can have adequate and meaningful consultation. It would be great if at some point we could get the pros and cons of, of going forth in that regard. Thanks. Maybe not right now.
Thank you, Trustee Bell. Over to Trustee Scott, and then I see that Trustee Boothby has also raised her hand as a first-time speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just picking up on where we are, I think one of the things that staff are really underlining in their presentation to us tonight is the importance of resiliency. Last week, the minister said in, in a single sentence just about that we could expect to hear about the GSNs in the very near future in short time and as soon as humanly possible, which says that the province itself is still struggling with finding ways to, to move forward because they are relying on health information and the health information is ring on what is reported and what is actually happening, and that is changing in this province every day. I think that I really appreciate the effort that staff have made to make this concept of a budget, a very resilient document. We can plan around the things we do know, but there are so many things that we don't know and that we won't know for a while that the best we can do right now, and I think staff have done an amazing job of this, is to make sure that those things are considered, that they're in the mix, that the possibilities are there so that as soon as we do have some definites, we do have some concepts of what we're going to do about them. I think the one question that I have right now for staff, when there was reference to possibly approving some kind of a provisional budget to ensure that we would have key staff positions in place for September in addition to the academic staffing and so on that we have already approved. I just wonder if, if staff could expand a little bit on that in terms of what they are counting as key staff.
Madam Chair, I think it's, you know, we, we know that we need to provide more EA's next year. Whether it's forty or eighty, we don't know yet. We would, We would, we believe strongly though that we need to move forward with some of those. And that's an example that if we're going to be able to actually recruit the right staff, get them trained and get them assigned to schools, then we need that approval sooner rather than later. That's, that's one example. We've got some other areas that are, that are key for us. I think the, the staff and B and LT, we have, everyone is aware that even before COVID, our district and other school districts were looking at how we could advance the the security and robustness of our networks. I think that's an investment that needs to happen sooner or later. In some of those categories, I don't think it's an all or nothing. It might be you do half now, and maybe that's all you would be able to do. But I think the ones, and again, we haven't, we, we haven't finished our own internal discussions around it. But I think the ones that are most directly associated with classrooms and schools are the ones we would be looking at earliest. So if there were going to be changes in EA's office assistants, custodial staff, those are the ones we would be looking at as a priority.
Thank you. That's all my question.
Thank you, trustee Scott. Trustee Boothby, over to you. And just to do a check here, trustee Bell, your hand is still up and I don't know whether you wanted to be okay. Thank you. All right. So over to you, trustee Boothby.
Thank you. So thanks for the information on the provisional. That was one of my questions. My second question is, I like seeing that we have this COVID kind of lump provision. I think it's probably a little bit low unless we have other things more spread out. And I suppose I would like to see our COVID contingency in one bucket. And then perhaps some line items as to what that is. But one of my concerns is looking through here that I'd like to have a comment on, particularly when we look at things like facility staff, mental health supports. We know social workers, some principals are going from school to school. If we're only going to employ 14 FTE more facilities, I know that does mean you might get a 50% here, 50% there. But one of the things that I'm concerned about that we've seen in the long term care facilities, and I think is going to be a concern for a while, is that we don't have staff like social workers, like potentially principals that were sharing or custodial people that were sharing or moving from school to school because there's often a huge lag time between understanding that a person is infected and, and where they have been. So I don't want us to be in a situation where we're sharing, for instance, mental health supports in four or five high schools and somebody tests positive and now we have to close down four or five high schools because that person has been deployed 20% here, 10% there, 5% there. So I actually think that our COVID bucket is a little small. So if I could have a staff comment on that, please.
Madam Chair, I can begin. We, at the moment, that was higher. We specifically identified the million dollars in our area to provide additional daytime cleaning. And that was before we got into some of the added possibilities for the fall. One of the reasons we are waiting to see what we get from the province is that depending on their expectations of cleaning, that will have to come with additional funding. With respect to the other question though, about how we, how we deal with the question of our itinerant staff, whether they're teachers or our professional staff or custodial staff. If we were to try to adopt a model like the province imposed on a long term care, there aren't enough qualified staff to do it. You know, with, with our itinerant custodians, by having them work at two schools, I can, I can provide them with the equivalent of full time hours. We don't have the funding or the infrastructure that would allow me to have full time hours at each building. If they only have three to four hours a night available to them, we may not be able to retain people. I think the, that, that challenge is going to have to be dealt with in the ongoing work that we're doing with OPH and that code and the other associations they're doing with the ministry in the return to school committee in terms of looking at protocols, in terms of looking at required PPE and how we manage that. Because the situation you've indicated is real and we're going to have to take a look at how we manage it. And finally, yes, we'd be happier with a larger contingency. And that's one of the reasons we are taking more time to take a look at just how we could put a recommendation together.
Okay, thank you for that information. And just with respect to the schedule, I would like us to not build a plan until we've at least seen the provincial plan at the end of June. Because it's pretty hard to build a plan when we really don't know what we're going to be expected to do. You know, when we talk about social distancing, I look at a lot of our schools and that's just not possible in the classroom. So I have a lot of questions. I'm sure staff has been on more conference calls and has better information. But I'd be very hesitant and uncomfortable to be able to approve a budget that's built on a plan that we don't even know what the plan and the expectations of the province are for. But having said that, I like the idea of these provisionals because I think, as you've just said, a lot of us are going to be faced with, how are we going to be able to fill our need for teachers and EAs and custodials, et cetera, et cetera? Because the other consideration around people that we hire is this demographic of 60 plus that are high risk or people with high risk medical, underlying medical conditions. That makes that much more difficult. So I am in favor of this provisional type budgeting, but I really would like to understand what the plan is before we're approving a complete budget. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Boothby. I believe, I just want to do a time check. We do have a budget or sorry, a a board meeting starting at 9:00 PM, a public meeting. There's quite a lengthy agenda on that and we are not finished the budget, the budget committee meeting at this point. So I will turn quickly over to trustee Lyra and then trustee Campbell. And unless there's any burning questions that must be asked in public, I will leave the speaker list at that. Or do you, trustee Lyra?
I would like to echo what my colleague trustee Ellis said about going above the 1%. If there was a year to do it, this seems to be the ideal time to spend reserves. I can't think of more appropriate time. And then I was going to ask my colleagues at the board if we would be willing to write a letter to the ministry saying that we will not be prepared to submit a budget, budget for July, for June 30th. I'll throw this as a motion. I'm going to put forward a motion that the chair of the board writes a letter to the minister saying that we will not be prepared to submit a budget by June 30th.
Hey, trustee Lyra, thank you. I'll need somebody to have recorded a motion and, and perhaps put it on the screen so that trustees can debate, discuss.
Madam Chair.
May I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Just a moment, trustee Blackburn. We've got first trustee Scott. I've got trustee Blackburn. I've got trustee Fisher. Trustee Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In, in the board meeting, one of the things I was planning to do was to ask trustees for input to a potential letter to the minister on a host of issues. This could be part of it rather, because even if we try to do this in budget, there may be other things as well. And it would be better to do it in the board, in the board discussion. And I'm not sure that we would absolutely need to have a, a motion. And in any event, the budget committee would still have to, to send the motion forward to board.
Okay, thank you, trustee Scott.
No problem withdrawing my motion if we're going to discuss it forward.
Okay, thank you, trustee Lyra. Is that it then, trustee Lyra?
Yeah, that was it.
Thank you, trustee Campbell. You've taken your hand down. I presume that means you don't have a second question?
Whoops, no, I do. It's not a question. It's just, thank you. I'll be very brief or try to be, just I did want to reply to the superintendent's queries in terms of input. I'd ask my questions really. And that is in terms of the, the dates, I think I too would rather see what happens in June from the province. I'm sure the province is facing pressure from all boards, but something out, they're not going to be delaying unduly, I'm sure. So I think we can expect something by the end of June. And if we have to go into July, so be it. I guess that's my perspective. In terms of the stability question, I am concerned that if we maintain what I see in terms of the presentation is a whole bunch of cost pressures, many of which are extraordinary, all of which are recommended. And I get the recommended continued support for stability in this very unusual year. But to a certain extent, potentially, stability could be in conflict with overall stewardship, which is about multi-year stability. And I am concerned about an important in-year deficit issue we'd have to deal with the subsequent year. So again, I'll really be looking forward to see what staff put together. But I think this is, because this is extraordinary times, your levels of government spending hundreds of billions of dollars. Every government, every institution is really stretching itself, is doing unusual things and unusual times. I don't think this is, as the superintendent perhaps suggested, this is not the time to stick by the rulebook, stick under 1% and cut spending where we have all this additional spending we have to do on top of what we regularly do. All these additional sort of fundamentally COVID related pressures. If we have to go above 1%, let's do it. Let's not go marginally above 1%. We can just find some savings to stay under 1%. We go over 1% if it's, if it's non-trivial, right? I would imagine. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee Campbell. Trustee Blackburn, over to you. And then I have trustee Fisher. And then I also have CFO Carson's hand up.
Yeah, my comment is no longer required or necessary.
Okay, thank you. Over to you, trustee Fisher then.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. I think just in response to the discussion about the timing of the budget. You know, if I remember correctly, I think by act or by regulation, we're required to submit a budget, a balanced budget by a certain period of time, whether that's June 30th or another date. But I think it's, I think it's a statutory requirement. So it's not something that, if I remember correctly, and Lynn can correct me if I'm wrong, that we can just decide on our own. And so I think, you know, either by letter or by, you know, those conference calls that Lynn is, is now having with the minister on the Fridays. I suspect that that's a question that all boards will want to ask because we're, I'm assuming we're probably not the only board that's in this situation. And I'm a bit surprised, frankly, given the timing of the year that it hasn't been brought up yet, you know, as part of everybody else's, you know, considerations in terms of how we move forward. So just a general comment, but you know, I think we'll need ministry guidance because we don't control necessarily all parts of the budget process and when things need to be submitted.
Okay, thank you, trustee Fisher. Perhaps can we have a staff comment on, on the statutory requirement?
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll just do it as part of my wrap up. I, the ministry has said they are looking at the regulatory part of it. Originally, they were not going to change June 30th, but they were going to be flexible in terms of not applying any of the financial penalties that come along with it in terms of withholding cash. That was when they thought they might have a GSN to us in March and April. It's clear now that they will have to make an adjustment. The deputy minister came as close to saying that as I've heard her on Thursday. So I think that that is part of the discussion. I think the, the reason it hasn't moved more quickly is that like us, there are boards that know there are things they need approval for sooner rather than later. So I, I hope that, that does address the trustee's question. Just want to wrap up by saying I appreciate the input we've had. Several of those questions are the same ones that we have been talking about as a group among ourselves and with our colleagues at other school boards. We'll try to reflect that as we come forward with a recommendation about where we go from here. I just want to reassure trustees, what you saw before you is not a recommended budget. Those were the kinds of things we were looking at choosing from as we built a budget over the last few months. There will be, some of those will disappear, some of them, the numbers will change. And there's probably going to be a couple of others that appear that we haven't got to yet. And so we will be looking at that. The only other thing that I want to, again, we've heard the input, we'll consider it as much as possible unless the province were to make a substantial change in its guidelines. We will try to see if we can live within that 1%. Anytime we need to obtain the minister's approval, it just takes us our own future out of our own hands. But that is part of the ongoing discussion with the ministry as long as well as other regulatory changes. So I did want to say thank you for the input. We've listened and we'll put something together and see what our next steps are. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Director, you had your hand up.
Chair, my comments are pretty well covered by CFO Carson's comments. Simply to say that not only with the calls with the chairs, but also with the calls with the deputy minister and the directors. It has been made very clear that the ministry recognizes that the timelines are virtually impossible to me, given that they have not provided us with the information that we require. And the question has been explicitly asked in the call with the chairs last week. I believe that the wording was, how is there an expectation as for us to build a budget when we don't know how much money we'll have? So that was pretty well how the question was worded. And so I think it is most clear. And what has been communicated to us is the expectation for and the commitment to flexibility. So we can presume that when the, when we get closer to release, that we will be getting some direction on what that flexibility looks like.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further speakers to this item, we will then move to, move to item four on our agenda, new business. Is there any new business that trustees wish to raise? Hearing none, we'll move then to the item five, scheduled committee of the whole budget meetings. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, superintendent, I do believe that we have a tentative meeting scheduled for next Monday, but I'm not sure if that's actually proceeding. And then the eighth of June would be the staff recommended budget. Should the GSNs actually come very soon? Perhaps you could walk us through it.
Madam Chair, what we are looking at is that we're at Tuesday night. There wouldn't be time to put together a reasonable package by June the first. We are saying we should hold the meeting on June the eighth and we will provide an update at that point. By then, if we've seen a GSN, we may be able to, as I said, narrow that range of variability that we've talked about. I don't think we'll be in a stage for a full recommended budget. But we should hopefully by the eighth be in a position to start talking about timelines and the steps forward. So we would be recommending not proceeding with the meeting of the first, but we should have the meeting on the eighth.
Very much, uh, Superintendent. Are there any concerns, questions raised on the, uh, on the schedule? I know we did discuss that during the, uh, the last item, but just wanted to, uh, to check. Okay, seeing none then, uh, I will, uh, I will just advise that the next meeting then will be held on June the eighth at seven PM. And, uh, that adjourns this, this, uh, meeting this evening. Thank you very much. And just to check in with Chair Scott, do we need to stay on this Zoom or go on to a different Zoom for the next meeting?
My understanding from staff and, and perhaps the executive officer, or someone can, can correct me if I'm wrong about this, but I think we all stay on this meeting. However, it may take a moment for, uh, the people who are not needed for the, uh, for the board meeting to, to, uh, remove themselves from this meeting. So please stay on, stay on this, this meeting, uh, connection, and, uh, I will be calling our board meeting to order in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. So meeting adjourned for the budget meeting and we'll resume the next meeting momentarily. Thank you.
And if anybody has their hands up right now, would you please put your hands down again? And we will just give this a second to have those people leaving who are not part of the board meeting. I'm just checking the attendance list here. And those people who are leaving the meeting are welcome to switch over to watch the live stream, uh, on the board website. And I will ask the manager of Board Services to let me know when we've got the attendance to where it should be. And it looks as though we're all good now. And with that, I would like to call this meeting of the board to order. And I would also like to acknowledge that we are meeting from many locations in the Algonquin Territory and thank the Algonquin Nation for hosting us on their land. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? And trustee Campbell is moving that, seconded by trustee Fisher. Uh, are there any comments or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, I will the question then on the agenda, although in favor and opposed. And the motion is approved. We move on then to item three on our agenda, which is the report from the board in camera. I'll call on Vice Chair Penny for that, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board, um, been in camera this evening and has no recommendations, uh, for this evening, so.
Thank you very much, trustee Penny. And that brings us then to the briefing from the Chair of the Board. And I have several items, uh, to go through tonight. Uh, first, with regard to school closures, last week, the Ontario Government extended the closure of publicly funded schools until the end of the school year. This news was disappointing for many of us, but the health and safety of students and staff remain our highest priority. I would like to reiterate my appreciation to all of our staff and our community members for their commitment to supporting student learning and wellbeing during this closure. As part of his announcement, the Minister of Education stated that he would be releasing a plan later in June to assist schools in preparing for the reopening of schools in September. Today, we learned that the ministry has launched a consultation on their plan, and they are receiving feedback by email. A link to that plan has been added to the supplemental items under the COVID-19 update on this agenda. Our staff is working locally and with the ministry to plan for the, uh, welcome students back in our schools in September. More information will be shared with parents and with students as soon as it's available. Secondly, with regard to school councils, last week, a memo was sent to school councils regarding end-of-year planning and finalizing any outstanding school council business. I'd like to take a moment on behalf of the Board of Trustees to express my sincere thanks to all of our school council volunteers. Even though, even through the closure period, our school councils have been interacting with principals and with families and have done some wonderful things to support families in need in our communities. Unfortunately, the physical distancing restrictions prevent many of the in-person end-of-year gatherings or celebrations that school councils would usually hold. And it also prevents our own volunteer appreciation reception, where we usually have the opportunity to thank our council members directly. Uh, that doesn't mean we don't thank you, and we will figure out a way to, to make sure that we have, uh, suitable recognition of those outstanding volunteers as we have done every year. Finally, in terms of labor relations, I'm very pleased to report that the central agreements with teachers and education workers represented by the Ontario Secondary School Teachers' Federation have now been ratified. This follows from the ratification of central agreements with the Elementary Teachers' Federation of Ontario that we shared last month, and our local negotiations are proceeding. And that concludes my briefing. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'd like to move on then to the briefing from the Director. Director Williams Taylor.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Uh, first, I'd like to, uh, wish, uh, anyone, you know, everyone in our community who is celebrating, um, the end of Ramadan this past weekend, Eid Mubarak. Um, we know that, um, it, uh, it's, uh, it's the closure of, uh, forty days of fasting. Um, and, uh, it is a very celebrated time in the Muslim community. Um, we will have, uh, COVID-19 update, uh, on the agenda later this evening, but I did want to acknowledge, uh, a number of things that are good news items, um, that have been happening, uh, during this, uh, closure time. One of the things that we're aware of and we've become acutely aware of is that not all of our students have the resources and the resu, the supplies that they need, um, readily at home, whether because, um, they typically don't have them at home or they have, uh, left them at school. Um, and so to help our students to continue to learn at home, we have now developed, uh, delivered more than eleven thousand Chromebooks, um, over a thousand internet hotspots. Um, and thanks to the work of many people, uh, including the Education Foundation of Ottawa, um, the Executive Director, Clarissa Arthur, emergency school supplies have been collected and distributed to seven hundred Ottawa children, uh, who need, uh, these supplies at home. Bags of school supplies were delivered to help students to participate in their learning at home activities. Um, the initiative called Growing Learners has evolved, uh, over this time. Uh, it has been amazing to see our educators to trying, uh, new and innovative approaches to combine learning and supporting students. Partnering with the Education Foundation, uh, Best Foods and Ottawa Good Food Box, we were able to start delivering food boxes and garden packages to approximately one thousand students across the district. The packages come with learning materials, uh, about how to grow, uh, vegetables at home. They are also designed for students who may live in apartments and don't have access, uh, readily to outdoor spaces. And our hashtag, "Thank You From OCDSB" campaign, last month, OCDSB launched a "Thank You" campaign to essential workers. Students have shared more than four hundred and fifty letters, pictures and videos. We have taken these videos and these materials and sent them to local organizations across the city. Students and parents should be happy to know that they have been very well received and greatly appreciated. Um, they are now on display in local hospitals. They have been shared through employee newsletters and highlighted on social media. And that's all from my report, Madam.
Thank you very much, Madam Director. Uh, are there any questions for the Director on her report? And I'm seeing none. And that brings us to our delegations. I seem to have actually two delegations, uh, showing up on, in the waiting room. Uh, the first one had given previous notice and four minutes for his presentation, and any additional delegations will be limited to two minutes for their presentation. As we move to our delegations then, I would like to welcome Mr. Robin Brown. And while Mr. Brown gets set up, I'd like to take a minute to speak to this particular delegation request. This board is very committed to public delegations. At our last meeting, we denied a request for delegation, which was directly related to a code of conduct investigation that is currently underway. That matter has been the subject of two delegations, and the related investigation will come before this board in due time. That is not the focus of this delegation. Prior to approving, uh, Mr. Brown's delegation tonight, I did have the opportunity to connect with him to consider his request. And I asked that he refrain specifically from making any comments about the current investigation, the incident which led to it, or any matters directly relating to that. And I would ask the same of trustees, if they, if there are any questions from trustees for Mr. Brown. And I will give you fair warning now that I will intervene if such matters are raised. So, Mr. Brown, thank you very much for joining us this evening, and thank you for your understanding. You do have four minutes, and I'd like to invite you now to proceed, please.
There you go. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and Madam Director. Trustees, good evening. Um, I'm, can you hear me, by the way?
Yes, we can.
Uh, so I'm here today to voice, uh, community concerns about the board's process for addressing complaints of alleged violation of the board's code of conduct. And there are four issues that I wish to raise on behalf of the community members that are supporting my delegation, uh, this evening. First, uh, the process appears to have no mechanism for taking into account trustees who have violated the code multiple times, and instead it treats each case like a first offense. Second, the board members sometimes choose to impose the lightest sanction, a censure, for offenses that deserve much more, which leads to no behavior change. Third, the maximum sanctions that the board can impose on members found violation of the code, such as banning them from some meetings, are inadequate and clearly not an effective deterrent. They don't cause members to change their behavior, rather they embolden trustees to keep breaking the code. Fourth, the board uses the code of conduct investigation process to prevent members of the public from speaking to any related issues, and this is in direct violation of the code. For example, the, the board denied my request to speak at the April twenty-eighth board meeting. And the reason that I was given was that a complaint had been filed under the board's code of conduct policy regarding issues covered in my presentation. The complaint was currently being investigated by an outside consultant who would be filing a report with the board that the trustees would be called upon to consider, to determine what sanctions, if any, should be applied against the trustee under investigation. And I was told that the code of conduct requires trustees not to conduct their own investigation, uh, of the conduct referenced in the complaint. They would consider only the facts found in the consultant's report in rendering their decision. We, as a community, were asked to understand why it was therefore inadvisable for members of the board to hear our delegations on the same subject matter while the consultant's investigation was proceeding. We neither understand nor agree. There is nothing in the code that supports such a ban. Rather, the code prohibits discussing, quote, "the complaint, the response to the complaint, and the investigation of the complaint," unquote, only. So since neither myself nor any members of the organizations I represent made the complaint, nor know any of its specifics, we couldn't speak about it even if we wanted to. Furthermore, by denying our request based on the assertion that our delegation touched on the subject of the complaint, and therefore might sway the trustees in the decision, the board violated the code's confidentiality requirement to not reveal what's in the complaint. Additionally, if the board's position is, as it appears to be, that trustees could be influenced by hearing delegations on the same subject while the consultant's investigation is proceeding, what is the board doing to ensure that trustees are not unduly influenced by trustees under investigation, his or her supporters or the media? If the board isn't taking action to isolate trustees, similar to how juries are sequestered, for example, then banning members of the public, like myself, or the community organizations that stand with me, is like sequestering the trustees only from the public, which is clearly unfair and only serves to benefit trustees under investigation. So we call on the board to review the issues raised in today's delegation and revise the process for investigating alleged code of conduct violations to increase compliance with the code. Your support in this regard will help restore public confidence in the process, the code and the board itself. And we will also be taking this up with our provincial representatives. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. I see that we have a couple of, uh, questions coming up, and, uh, I remind trustees that these are questions for clarification only. And, uh, so I will go first to trustee Ellis.
Um, thank you, and, and thank you, Mr. Brown, for, um, highlighting some of the oddities in our code of conduct. Um, I'm just wondering, um, since you won't be able to give a public delegation I'm just wondering, since you won't be able to give a public delegation, would you be expected to give your delegation to the consultant who's looking into the code of conduct complaint so that it can be, so that your delegation will become part of the record?
I would like to do that, yeah. If it was a process for submitting my delegation to the consultant, I would very much like it to be part of what he or she considers.
Perhaps someone from the board be in touch and clarify that for you.
Sounds good, thank you.
And next I have trustee Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your delegation this evening, Mr. Brown. My question really is more, it's broader than just sort of the code of conduct policy at the board table. Could you comment at all about your feelings whether or not there should be provincial changes to legislation or on regulation related to how boards actually deal with codes of conduct?
Good question. I'm not intimately familiar with the legislation itself, just the code of conduct for this particular board. So that's all I can speak to is that.
Thank you for that. Did you have any?
No, just my follow on is simply if you are going to be speaking with the ministry, for example, I think having some references related to provincial legislation would be, would probably be quite helpful.
Yeah, no, good, good, good idea.
Thank you, trustee Schwartz. And finally, I have trustee Campbell.
Trustee Schwartz, I think, asked my question and made my point, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Campbell. And because we had your written submission in advance, Mr. Brown, we did have some time to consider the questions that you raised. And I think it would be perhaps helpful to you to, if we try to provide you with an answer or two to those, beginning with your question about the mechanisms within, within the code of conduct and the process for taking into account multiple violations of the code of conduct. And I would like to go, I think, directly to our executive officer, Michelle Giroux, for a comment on that.
Thanks very much and thanks very much for the questions. So under the code of conduct, there's a provision that says wherever possible, allegations of a breach of the code shall be investigated using the informal process. But the code also provides that serious and or recurring breaches are dealt with using the formal review process. So within the code, there is actually a recognition of different types of occurrence. When the board has a formal review, it gets the investigator's report and it makes a decision on whether or not the code has been breached. It's the decision about the code and whether or not the code has been breached that the board has to consider the finding of facts. The decision about the application of sanctions is a separate decision that the board makes, and they only make that if they decide there has been a breach. When they determine what sanctions, if any, can be applied, they have a choice of three sanctions that are defined in both the legislation and the code. And we believe and we are seeking further clarification from legal counsel that in the determination of sanctions, the board does have discretionary authority there about how broad or how deep is the sanction, and that can be based on a number of other factors. So just a little background there about how that part of the process works.
Thank you, Ms. Giroux. Now, with regard to the second question, in terms of sometimes board members seem to choose to impose the lightest sanction, a censure, for offenses that deserve much more, which, which leads to no behavior. I can say that on the few occasions when the board, when this board has undertaken a formal review and had to consider whether the code of conduct had been breached, it has tried to choose a sanction that was appropriate to the circumstances at the time. The third question that you raised relating to the fact that the maximum sanctions that the board can impose on members who are found to be in violation of the code of conduct are inadequate and clearly not an effective deterrent, not causing members to change their behavior or not deterring repeat offenses. I can say that the sanctions that are available to the board for code of conduct violations are determined by provincial legislation and specifically the Education Act. In order to increase the severity of the sanctions that are available to the board, you would need to appeal to the provincial government to change the Education Act on that. Current, in the code, is the following sanctions. Number one, censure of the board member. Number two, banning the board member from attending all or part of a meeting of the board or a meeting of a committee of the board. And three, barring the board member from sitting on one or more committees of the board for the period of time specified by the board not to exceed six months. Under the Education Act, the board cannot impose a sanction that is more onerous than these, but it may impose one that is less onerous. For example, we could just issue a warning. The board does not have any power to declare the trustee's seat vacant. And finally, where you refer to the board using the code of conduct investigation process to prevent members of the public from speaking to any related important issues, and you see this as being in direct violation of the code of conduct. I understand, and I think all of us understand the concerns that the community and indeed some trustees have raised in this regard. And I will ask Executive Officer Giroux to explain further, please.
Thank you. So like the chair indicated, certainly we understand the fine balance between the right for community members to appear as delegations and the importance of procedural fairness in terms of the investigation. And so one of the things we think about is not, what the code says is, when the board makes a decision about the breach of the code, it must do so based on a finding of fact, and that finding of fact comes from the investigator. And it also says that trustees can't undertake an independent investigation. And so the challenge is not exclusively the idea of an individual coming forward and delegating, but it's that when trustees ask questions of those delegates, the asking of the questions and the seeking out additional facts or references may be construed as undertaking a separate finding of fact. And if the board does that, then the board may find itself subject to appeal in terms of any decision that it makes. So that's what we mean when we talk about protecting the integrity of the process. We certainly have heard the concerns about, are we erring on the right side? And trying to look at each delegation request individually on the merits of and the substance of the delegation and working with legal counsel and are also mindful that the board has set in place a process to appoint an integrity commissioner. And this is an area that may play out slightly differently once an integrity commissioner is in place. And so that's an area where we have some opportunity for further reflection and growth as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Giroux, for your assistance with providing some responses. Mr. Brown, that concludes your time for your delegation. And thank you again for appearing here tonight.
Chair, excuse me, Chair.
Trustee Ellis.
Since we went to so much, we took the unusual process for a delegation to explain some of the nuances around this. I'm wondering if we could get a comment on whether the community can delegate on this issue to the consultant who's looking at this?
Trustee Ellis, that's not something we can determine at this point in time. In this is for a board meeting after all. It is, it is permitted in the bylaws that if a delegation raises questions, that there is an expectation for answers if possible. We have tried to do that tonight because the questions were quite clear and the, and they were provided in advance so that we had that opportunity. I will, I will undertake some further discussion with, with staff and with legal counsel in terms of the investigation process.
I think the other thing that needs to be clarified is just when community delegations could come to speak to us on this, could it be the evening that the consultants' report that we, it comes to a board meeting?
We will take that under advisement, trustee Ellis.
Thank you.
And it would appear that the other delegation that had showed up in the, in the waiting room was not actually a delegation. So that brings us along in our agenda to the next item, which is the confirmation of the board minutes from the twenty eighth of April, 2020, at, at folio one, if you're looking at the folio numbers. Item seven point one, if you're looking, if you're not looking at the folio numbers, and I'm looking for someone to move confirmation of those minutes. Trustee Fisher will move and trustee Schwartz will second. Are there any errors or omissions in the minutes from the twenty eighth of April, 2020? And I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I will call the question then on confirming the minutes of the twenty eighth of April, 2020, all those in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. And now for the minutes of the special board meeting from the twelfth of May, 2020. Trustee Huff, you're moving to confirm those minutes. Do we have a secondor? And trustee Fisher will second that. And are there any errors or omissions in this set of minutes? And seeing none, all those in favor of confirming the minutes of the special board of twelfth May, 2020? And opposed? And that motion is carried. Is there any business arising from either of these sets of board minutes? Trustee Bell, do you have an issue of business arising?
I do not.
Thank you very much. Moving on then, we have next non-consent items. We don't have any of those tonight. Item seven point four, report twenty dash zero four six appointments to the Ontario Public School Boards Association for the period of July the seventh, 2020 to July the seventh, 2021. Madam Director.
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. Executive Officer Giroux will outline the plan for that selection process as per the letter of transmittal that you have before you. So I'll turn to Executive Officer Giroux at this time.
Thank you very much. And because we have a new trustee, I'll spend just a minute walking through this process. The board annually makes appointments to the Ontario Public School Boards Association, and the appointments are for a year. In this case, the year will be July seventh, 2020 to July seventh, 2021. The reason for the timing of these appointments, which is outside of the rest of the appointments, which are made at the org meeting, is to align with the OPSA calendar. We used to do it at a different time and we found ourselves in a situation where midway through the director cycle on OPSA, we were changing membership. And so it didn't make good business sense. So the board appoints two directors to the board of directors and two alternate directors as well, and then voting delegates for the Eastern Regional Council meetings and the annual general meeting and an alternate voting delegate for each of those things. The practice for the last several years as to, it was, is to have the directors also serve as the voting representatives and the Eastern Regional Representative, and they have historically sorted that out between themselves. And so the process requires people to either self-nominate or to be nominated. If there are people interested, they can put their name forward. And if it's necessary, we will have an election. Because we're meeting remotely tonight, we will conduct the election slightly differently. We will conduct the election using the chat form. And so I'll go through the details about how that will work once we get to the voting stage. But I'll pause there and invite any questions before the chair calls for nominations.
Are there any questions on the purpose and the process? And I'm seeing none, so I will call first of all for nominations for the position of director for OPSA for the coming year. And we will need two individuals to do this, so nominations or self-nominations. Trustee Penny.
I would like to nominate trustee Boothby.
And is there a secondor for that nomination?
I'll second the nomination.
Thank you, trustee Schwartz. Trustee Boothby, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do, thank you.
And are there any other nominations? Trustee, trustee Lyra.
I would like to self-nominate.
Trustee Lyra is self-nominating. And do we have a secondor for that self-nomination? Because trustee Ellis will second that. And I don't need to ask whether or not you would be willing to accept that nomination. And trustee Boothby?
I'd like to nominate trustee Penny.
Trustee Boothby is nominating trustee Penny. And do we have a secondor for that nomination? Trustee Schwartz is seconding that. And do we have any other nominations? If we're not having any other nominations, could somebody please move to close nominations? Trustee Campbell, is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Thank you. And do we have a secondor for the motion to close nominations? Trustee Huff, thank you very much for that. And I will call the question on the motion to close nominations, all those in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. So it looks as though we are going to have an election here. We have three names that have been proposed, three nominations for trustee Boothby, trustee Lyra and trustee Penny. We vote for two names, so that we have two directors. And Madam Director, do you, are you going to appoint us some election assistants here?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Executive Officer Giroux has coordinated the assistance for this process.
With, with Associate Director Reynolds.
Excellent. And would you like to clarify the process then for voting, Ms. Giroux?
Absolutely. So voting is normally done by secret ballot. And so to maintain the integrity of your vote in this format, we're going to use the chat feature in Zoom. And we're going to, we've divided trustees into two groups and we're going to ask half of you to private message in chat to me and the other half to private message to Associate Director Reynolds. Trustee Blackburn, who is on the phone, will text message her vote to me directly. And so I'll just advise you of the group. So trustees Fisher, Schwartz, Jenikins, Lyra, Bell and Blackburn will text, will chat, private chat their message to me or send me their message and using the private chat feature. And trustees Scott, Ellis, Boothby, Penny, Huff and Campbell will message Associate Director Reynolds. And Associate Director Reynolds and I will take a minute to confer once we've tabulated the count and we'll come back and report to you. And I will turn my video off in that time. tabulated the count, and we'll come back and report to you. And I will turn my video off in that time.
And I expect it will be just a moment before we have some before the voting is finished by everyone, and we have some results to report. And I do have some results to report from the election. Congratulations to trustee Boothby and trustee Penny. And if someone could remind me whether we actually need to then insert the names into the motion that is before us and have someone move, move the recommendation? Ms. Giroux?
So we have the recommendation there. Technically, they're voting. They they have been elected. We can have the motion to confirm. We do need to open the floor to nominations for the alternate directors. So my suggestion is we put the names in A and B, and then
And then have a motion to confirm both parts. Excellent. So the same process will apply in terms of the alternate directors. And I will call for nominations. Trustee Boothby?
I'd like to nominate trustee Bell, please.
And do we have a seconder for that nomination?
I will second. Trustee Penny?
Trustee Penny will second that. And do you accept the nomination, trustee Bell?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for for alternate director, trustee Campbell?
Yes, I'd like to self-nominate.
Trustee Campbell is self-nominating. And do we have a seconder for that nomination? Trustee Huff, are you seconding that?
I'll second.
Yes, yes, I am.
Trustee Huff is seconding that. And are there any other nominations? Trustee Huff, did you have a nomination that you wish to make? Or trustee Boothby, do you have another nomination to make?
Yes, please. I'd like to nominate trustee Lyra, please.
And trustee Boothby is nominating trustee Lyra. And do we have a seconder for that nomination? Trustee Ellis will second that. Trustee Lyra, do you accept the nomination? And are there any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, I think I need a motion to close nominations, please. Trustee Campbell will move to close nominations, and that is seconded by trustee Penny. All those in favor of closing nominations? And opposed? And that motion is carried. So as before, text to the text or chat to the same person as you texted or chatted to in the first election. Gain vote for two, two people, please. And I have a result to announce. And I am pleased to say congratulations to trustee Bell and trustee Campbell. You have been elected as alternate directors. So I think I need now for somebody to put the motion on the floor with the names trustee Boothby and Penny in part A, and with the names Bell and Campbell part B. Trustee Schwartz, are you moving that?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. And a seconder for that? Trustee Penny will second that. And I forget whether we need a recorded vote on this.
I'm going to say you don't need a recorded vote because technically you've already confirmed.
Yeah, we've already done it. So I think we're probably okay without a recorded vote. I will call the question then. All those in favor of these appointments?
Trustee Blackburn in favor?
And those opposed? And the motion is carried. So congratulations to all of you. And I'm sure OPSPA and the board will be well-served in the coming year. That brings us on then to item 7.5 on our agenda. Report 20-050, Revised Secondary Teacher Staffing for 2020, 2021. Madam Director.
And through you, madam chair. We have superintendent McCoy here, who will take us through this report as we are seeking approval this evening. Superintendent McCoy?
Thank you, Director, and through you, Chair Scott. As the Director indicated, tonight we're bringing forward a revised secondary staffing plan for the 2021 school year. Trustees will recall that on March 31st, the board approved the academic staffing plan for next year, which included our elementary and secondary teaching complement. At that time, we signaled that it may be necessary to bring staffing back for consideration, subject to conclusion of central agreements. A central agreement was reached with OSSTF teachers and has since been ratified. And as part of the new central agreement, there is new staffing language that impacts on staffing that was approved at the end of March in a couple of ways. First, and perhaps the most straightforward, the memorandum of settlement includes a commitment on the part of the Crown to provide additional funds to school boards to add positions, to support special education, to support unique student needs, and to support mental health initiatives. The allocation for the OCDSB is equivalent to an additional 11 FTE. And while we would not normally come back to the board for approval, since we were bringing the staffing back, have included it in the revised staffing plan. Trustees will note that in the appendix, the additional 11 are include the five program enhancement positions that were already approved as part of the March 31st plan on the basis that those five served as a placeholder in anticipation that the funding would materialize through the collective bargaining process. And so we have adjusted the five to 11 for a net increase of six FTE for the purposes that I've outlined. The second change, which is more significant, is a reference in the new collective agreement to the maximum average class size of 23 to align with the change that is anticipated in the regulation related to class size. A change in the maximum average class size has a direct impact on the classroom staffing positions that the board allocates, which are based directly on enrollment. The revised plan being brought forward proposes the reduction to the classroom allocation component of the secondary staffing to reflect an increase in the average class size. While the full impact of moving to a maximum average class size of 23 would mean a reduction of approximately 58 FTE classroom positions for next year. For the reasons that I'll touch on briefly, staff is of the view that moving to 23 with a reduction of 58 at this time would be neither advisable nor attainable. Instead, staff is recommending an adjustment that would reflect an increase in the current average to between 22.33 and 22.5 for next year, taking attrition and unforeseen changes in enrollment into account, and would provide staff with an opportunity over the next year to look more closely at the potential impact of moving to 23. And also attempting to take necessary steps that will facilitate transition closer to 23 for next year. As in classroom staffing. As part of the March 31st plan, the trustees approved a staffing allocation of 1,331.5 FTE, and the revised plan reflects a reduction of 20 FTE classroom positions from the current base. Again, to reflect an increase in the average class size to approximately 22.3. In terms of some of the factors that staff considered in making the the recommendation, first is a potential program impact. Although the planned increase to 23 will be less impactful than would have been the case if we were moving to the previous class size of 28, it's not completely clear at this point what the full program impact will be. A more moderate increase in the class size average for next year will, as I said earlier, provide us with an opportunity to assess the impact, and if necessary, make adjustments for the following year. The second factor that we looked at was planned, anticipated attrition and enrollment. As part of the central agreement, any net reductions in staffing to accommodate the increase in average class size will be absorbed through attrition. Although the usual attrition rate for secondary teachers is closer to 60 FTE annually, this year, the number of retirements submitted has been lower than usual. And although it's still possible that we may receive additional retirements, we do anticipate a lower rate for for this year, due in large part to some of the uncertainties surrounding the current situation with COVID-19. In addition, as trustees have heard previously, enrollment production, enrollment projections are more precarious this year than other years due to the uncertainty that's created by the pandemic. This is also already impacting on classroom staffing levels and is creating some staffing challenges in terms of planning for next year. The third factor that we considered was an attempt to minimize to the extent possible disruption to staff and students and to provide stability. Staffing and timetabling, which are always a demanding spring process for secondary administrators in HR, is complicated, more complicated this year as a result of the circumstances in which we find ourselves. Administrators having to do timetabling and staffing remotely without direct access to the resources that they usually have readily at hand. So do in large measure to the incredible efforts of our secondary principals and vice principals and the secondary staffing team within HR. Staffing and timetabling has been well underway since staffing was approved at the end of March and based on the staffing timelines that are in place. In anticipation of possible staffing adjustments coming, we have tried to take some proactive steps in terms of trying to minimize any more potential disruption. But we are concerned that introducing more substantive reductions at this point would require making adjustments to individual school staffing allocations that would be difficult to absorb without significant disruption or having to re-timetable and restaff in some cases. The final consideration, of course, was funding and the impact on the board's operating budget. Although the GSNs have not been released yet, the funded average for secondary classroom positions is expected to be adjusted to 23 next year to align with the maximum average class size figure. The revised staffing allocation being proposed would reduce the funding shortfall that was forecasted based on the approved staffing on March 31st. However, there would continue to be a gap between funding provided through the GSNs for classroom allocation and the actual classroom staffing levels until such time as the board achieves 23. While we know that funding parameters are not necessarily determinative of our spending decisions, they are certainly an important consideration. In the circumstances, however, we feel that the revised plan that's being recommended represents an appropriate balance between maintaining the board's commitment to fiscal responsibility and a strong desire and need to provide stability for students and staff next year, particularly given the level of uncertainty and instability that currently exists. So based on that, in summary, staff is recommending a revised secondary staffing plan that is outlined at Appendix A and includes a net reduction in the overall staffing. Again, based on the same projected enrollment that was included in March of a net reduction of 14 FTE for next year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, madam chair.
Thank you very much for for a very clear and succinct report. It's very helpful to have had the previous charts together with with the revised chart. I remind trustees that we are in board, which means you only speak once on on the motion. And I don't have any speakers on my list at present. But we have a decision to make here.
May I be on the list, madam chair?
Certainly, trustee Blackburn. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, madam chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, and I'd like to thank staff for the report and, of course, for giving us advance notice, committee, the whole, when we had the opportunity to discuss it. And I would like to put the motion on the floor, please.
And do we have a seconder for the recommendation? Trustee Campbell, are you seconding?
Yes.
And did you have any comments you wish to make? To be on the speaker's list or not?
No, thank you. I'm just slow with my mouse.
You're just slow with your mouse. That'll never do. And Trustee Schwartz, I thought I saw your hand flash up for a moment.
Do I get introduction, Madam Chair?
Oh, if you would like further introduction, Trustee Blackburn, I'm just trying to be mindful of the time here because we still have the COVID update to deal with.
No, I understand that. If I'm permitted, I'll be very brief.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. And yes, as I stated previously when we discussed this, I believe staff have taken a very prudent and rational approach to this and a balanced approach, and I look forward to my colleagues supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Blackburn. So Trustee Schwartz, did you wish to speak?
Sorry, sorry. No, I was good.
And I don't I don't see any other hands on my list. There are no other speakers. Is there any wrap-up required, Trustee Blackburn?
None, Madam Chair. Thank you.
In that case, I will call the question on the motion that the board approve the revised secondary staffing plan for the 2020-2021 school year, as outlined in Report 20-050 and set out in the attached Appendix A. This will be a recorded vote, and I will ask Manager Guthrie if she would do the roll call, please.
Trustee Boothby?
In favor.
Trustee Blackburn?
In favor.
Trustee Huff?
In favor.
Trustee Campbell?
In favor.
Trustee Ellis?
In favor.
Trustee Jenikins?
In favor.
Trustee Penny?
In favor.
Trustee Lyra Evans?
She says she's in favor. Her mic is being finicky.
Trustee Bell?
In favor.
Trustee Fisher?
In favor.
Trustee Schwartz?
In favor.
Trustee Scott?
In favor. And I believe that is carried unanimously. Thank you all very much for that. That brings us on then to the next item on our agenda, which is a matter for discussion, the COVID-19 update. You will see that we have several attachments to that, including the summary of results of the consultation with our students with regard to graduations and the most recent information from the ministry as well as some of the most recent memoranda that have been circulated to trustees outlining staff activities. So I'll call on the Director to present this. We don't have a lot of time here unless we want to go past 10:30. It is an important topic, so I would ask people to think about being succinct in their questions and comments down the road. So, Madam Director, please go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. So as the Chair has noted, the documents are all a part of the package. And so what I will do is simply go through the most current notes, which are my notes for tonight, but to provide some time for trustees to ask questions should they want to do so. As trustees are aware, our closure period has extended to the end of the school year. And we do continue with our commitments to our learning at home, specific to our students with special education needs. And our special education programs, there are a couple of worthy updates here. Firstly, working in partnership with Sick Kids and other stakeholders, we've been able to put a plan together to restart Empower Reading Program. We have been doing the Empower Reading to date, but from the point of view of maintenance rather than advancing lessons. And now, in collaboration with Sick Kids, we have been able to get systems in place to get that started. Over the past few months, we've been, like I said, reinforcing and consolidating. We're now in a position to provide delivery of the lessons online, and the expectation is that any students who started Empower during the 2019-20 school year will be provided with an opportunity to complete the program or continue the program now and/or in the fall. We've also been able to create a new parent website with resources to support students who are non-verbal or minimally verbal. Our speech-language pathologists have created this compilation of robust resources to support parents during this closure period and beyond. This complements the existing websites that are available for all OCDSB staff. And for mental health supports, we continue to develop further mental health supports for students and staff. Since our last meeting, we offered a series of staff workshops about supporting mental health, and these were very well attended, and plans are underway to continue and extend this work. We know that trustees have been asked questions, and certainly staff have been asked questions about picking up student belongings. And parents and students are very interested in accessing the school in order to collect belongings that remain since prior to the March break. Currently, we are developing a comprehensive plan, but there are a variety of considerations to undertake for thought around safety for parents, students, and staff. And of course, all plans are subject to collaboration and support of the Ottawa Public Health. So we are anticipating announcing a plan next week so that people will have an understanding around when the access to buildings to retrieve belongings will commence. The other piece that many questions have been asked about are graduation celebrations for our students who are in Grade 12, who will be graduating this year. We did invite Grade 12 students to share their thoughts about how we might celebrate their graduation and recognize physical distancing and all of the commitments that we're subject to at this point. We have a huge response. Lots of good ideas were shared by the students. A summary of their feedback is included as one of the items that is attached in the agenda under this item, the COVID-19 update. And using student ideas as well as input from school staff, and that includes our principals as well as our teachers of students in Grade 12. We're developing a district-wide strategy for celebrating these students this spring while reserving the formal ceremonies for the fall. We're not wanting to name exactly when in the fall because, of course, that will be dependent on our situation in the fall and direction and advice from public health. Key criteria in the planning are developing a strategy that will ensure our students' safety, equity of access, and will celebrate all students in the district who are graduating. In the next week, we will be ready to release the details to school staff, to students, and parents. So we ask that trustees stay tuned and that our public will stay tuned. We also wanted to highlight that the Ottawa Citizen and the Ottawa Sun are putting together a special graduation section and are inviting students to share their grad outfits, photos, speeches online and on their social media channels, special citizen section on June 18th, 19th, and 20th. To be included in the print edition, the deadline for submission is June 12th. So that's only two weeks away, and we are promoting this information to all of our Grade 12 students. For leaving ceremonies at the Grade 11 or at the elementary level, we will be holding virtual leaving ceremonies for students transitioning to new schools in September, and much information will be available through our schools. But we are cognizant of ensuring that we are equitable in our approach and that we maintain student privacy while it is that we recognize our students at this milestone time. The planning for reopening of school buildings, everyone is anxious to hear about that. The ministry has indicated that they will be sharing their perspectives and guiding principles towards the end of June regarding the reopening of schools in the fall. And we don't have a lot of direction on that yet. We are still waiting for provincial direction. But we have, in fact, initiated some of our considerations. There are some key points and key assumptions that we can make. And we are also gathering information from other jurisdictions, their experiences, as well as research that is happening, not only in other places in Ontario, but across the country. Earlier, we had a question regarding the DELF, Diplom de l'Etude de la France. The date for the International Administration of the DELF are established by yet another acronym, the CIEP. And I did look it up, the Softwood Internationale Désert de la Guége in France, the governing body for the administration of the DELF. The only dates scheduled for Canada in the spring this year were early April, May, and June, and all three administrations were canceled. We're waiting for further information regarding potential future dates for Canadian administration. And so at this point, if there are any other questions, we do know that we have attached previous memos that are updates to trustees as we continue to do this weekly. So if there are questions pertaining to this update or previous updates, I will do my best to entertain those questions now.
Thank you very much, Madam Director. And I have three people on my list at the moment, beginning with Trustee Penny. I will ask all of you to be as brief as you can so that we can get as many questions in as possible because we will have to do a 10:30 vote. Trustee Penny?
Sorry, I have my... No question.
Trustee Ellis?
Thank you. As we go forward into reopening, I'm just wondering about extracurricular and how we'll, if we'll be seeking community input on whether or not to hold them. But more timely, I understand we have an understanding with the city for the use of our fields. And if that's opened up and used, I know many of the sports teams would be expecting to use the change rooms in our schools. And I'm just wondering if I could comment on some of the challenges that that might present for the board.
Trustee Ellis, and yes, indeed, those are some of the questions that have been emerging. As you can imagine, in the absence of clear direction or clear guidelines from the ministry, we are loath to make any commitments at this point. At this point, those kinds of commitments would be purely speculative. We do also recognize there is going to be a dependence on what we hear from public health. I will say to you that the priority conversation is around reopening for instruction and reopening around childcare because these are quite essential and quite a priority for our public. But we do recognize that there are traditional and typical activities that go part and parcel with school activities as well as school and community life, such as what you have raised. But that is going to be very dependent on where the public health perception is. We have been alerted, and it's common in the news, that there is a realistic expectation that we could see some kind of resurgence in the fall. We could see some kind of reinstating of some of the emergency measures. And so the approach that our team has been taking is indeed very, very staged, very cautious. And essentially, what we're not wanting to do is make promises that we have to withdraw or make commitments that we have to cancel if we can help it at all.
Thank you, and may come down... I hope that you'll keep the trustees informed as to the position, especially around summer use of our fields and expectations that our schools will be part of opening that up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Ellis. Trustee Campbell?
Thank you very much. Two quick questions dealing with memos to trustees. I think it's five and six respectively. Anyway, in the first one, it mentions summer activities and work within schools, mainly BLT and systems upgrades and this kind of thing. But guess what I'm wondering? I know that our staff have not been able to get into the schools to do essential design work because of COVID restrictions to do the originally planned amount of in-school facility maintenance and reno that we might typically expect in the summer. But are we able to move more rapidly and advance our plans on landscaping and outside work, which presumably doesn't require, isn't subject to that kind of restriction? That's question one. And then in the next memo, it refers to the Red Cross being engaged by our board and others in conjunction with the City of Ottawa, OPH, to visit families and this kind of thing. There is perhaps an unfortunate turn of phrase, but I'd just like a clarification there, that the Red Cross representatives will be ensuring that families are properly supporting student learning. And it's a bit of a troubling turn of phrase. I'm hoping that what is meant is properly supported in accessing student learning or something else. But I would like perhaps a clarification to be offline at some point as to what the Red Cross representatives mandate are and what their scope of action is with respect to interceding with families, especially if it's at least in part on our behalf. Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Madam Director?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. I will say that our engagement and partnership with the Red Cross is primarily out of a function of care and outreach. And certainly, while it is that accessing Learn at Home and engaging with Learn at Home is an important priority, we have been able to engage with that kind of outreach quite successfully from our staff. Where it is that we are partnering is where it is we have not been successful in making the connections that we had hoped. And so just to ensure that our school communities know that we are here and available to them and that they have access to us, we are partnering with all accessible resources within the city. That said, we certainly can offer further detail on the genesis of that partnership and the scope of the partnership in a further update to trustees, as requested, pertaining to the landscaping work. I can see that CFO Carson is no longer on the call at this time. And while it is, it isn't something that we have talked about with great extent. We do know that when we have discussed Focus on Youth, which is we are supported by the ministry to continue and move forward with Focus on Youth, one of the opportunities for employment and engagement of our youth is with some of our landscaping projects and so forth. And so at this point, I am not able to provide details, but I think that I can say that But I think that I can say that at this moment, we are foreseeing the opportunity to be able to proceed with that. But that's certainly something that we could give a further detailed update on as the information becomes more clear.
Thanks a lot. 10:30.
Thank you very much. That was very nicely timed, but we're not done yet because I still have, have another speaker on my list. So I would like to call for the 10:30 vote. We have any further questions with regard to COVID? We have the OPSA update and that's basically it. So it shouldn't be too, too long. We need two thirds of trustees to agree to continue past 10:30. So I will call the question right now, asking for those to raise your hands if you agree to continue past 10:30. And we have our two thirds here. So next on my list, I have trustee Lyra.
Is my mic working?
Your mic is working at the moment.
Okay, so my, I've got two questions. My first question is, in the event of creation of a COVID-19 vaccine. Are we going to require students to have their vaccine to return to school?
Madam Director?
Sorry, so that is a good question, trustee Lyra. And I think that in the event of the creation of a vaccine, we would anticipate that there would be much. Direction coming from public health and we would also be looking at the regulations around immunization that go outside of. The Education Act. And so I, I think that that is a huge speculation at this point. To be quite frank, I have not been a part of any discussion or even any consideration of that particular item. So you are ahead of your time there, but it's certainly a valuable question because we recognize as well that. This is one of those circumstances where we, we hear talk of our herd, herd immunity. And we, we know that that's where it's effective, but we have no direction at this point. And no one has speculated on what the regulations will look like surrounding that particular eventuality.
Second question, there have been, community members and parents have reached out to schools to try and use the flower beds in the community gardens to. Grow food to support our partners at Parkdale. And I'm wondering if I can get explanations to why it is they've been turned down. The ability to grow community food in the, in the garden of property.
Thank you, and to you, Madam Chair, another good question, trustee Lyra. So one of the, that issue has just come to my attention as of a couple of days ago. And one of the challenges, the questions that I raised is a question about liability. When it is that we have, we don't have an established partnership with external partners. Having people engage in activities on the property usually requires a process before it is that. People are able to engage that way. The challenge that we have as, as public schools is that the public in public schools. Presents a, a representation that it is a complete and fair public access. Where that's not quite the case. They are public, public schools for, for the purpose of the public, funded for the public and by the public. Yet they do remain the domain and the property of, of the school board for the purpose of responsibility. So for example, if people chose to grow food on, on the property, someone gets hurt while they're doing that. Or there's something problematic with the food that is grown and so on, that does represent a risk. So it does require a process. I'm not saying that the outcome of the process would be a yes or a no. But I think that my huge question that I asked around that particular piece when it came to my attention is in fact the liability question. And, and so I think it's not something I would say is, is a no forever or not a possibility. But it's certainly just, it would require a process to get to an agreement there.
Okay, I will follow up on where we're at on that after, or a further email.
And I have trustee Penny.
Sorry, lazy.
Oh, you, you didn't mean to leave your hand up?
I did not. I apologize to the rest of the board.
That's okay. I don't have any other speakers on my list. There is one thing that I would like to add to this. First of all, to say, I think all of us really appreciate the weekly memos, Madam Director. And we find them very helpful in keeping us up to date. But the other thing goes to the, the Minister of Education and the planning process. That is now underway to try to develop a plan for September. By the end of June at a provincial level. Certainly in the course of our discussions in our budget meeting earlier this evening. And to some extent through the questions that you have raised tonight. And even more so the questions, the many questions that have been raised to staff over the last month or so. I'm sure that all, all trustees have some particular questions they would like to see answered in, in the minister's plan for September. And perhaps also some specific suggestions of things that they feel need to be included and considered in that planning. Now that we have established a more regular communication with school board chairs from all across the province. I would like very much to receive your questions and your. Input as to things that need to be considered so that I can use those to, to compile a, a letter, a list of, of things. That I can send to, to the minister and, and share as well as appropriate with other, with other school boards. And in addition to that, use, use some of that perhaps to spur questions when we have. Further communications directly with, with the Minister of Education moving forward through June. They have put out their consultation question in their, in the document that's attached here and you see, you will see the link to that. But I think it's important for us to the extent we can to speak as a board and I'm certainly prepared to write a letter on, on our behalf. But I don't want to do that without receiving your input. And then, then crafting a letter based on that, on that input so that it can, can move forward. So with that question, I see two hands just popped up freshly. But I'm asking basically not to try to discuss all the possibilities tonight. But to ask you specifically, if you would please send me your thoughts on that. So that I can begin to compose a letter which I would then circulate to all trustees before sending it for, for comment. And, and as well get any additional input from, from staff. So I have three people and I'm going to allow all three of you to, to speak. Trustee Ellis to start.
I'm just wondering, Chair, if we might want to consider holding some advocacy meetings around this issue?
In terms of our advocacy strategy committee?
Yes.
That's certainly something we can think about. But I think, I think one of the challenges there is that, that I think we want to get our thoughts together and send in sooner rather than later. So it's a, it may well be a question of timing, but certainly I will take that under advisement. Trustee Lyra, is there anything else?
I was just gonna say, I agree with you, the letter is timely, but going forward, I think there will be a number of advocacy issues around the reopening and that. Thank you.
Oh, I expect you're, you're quite right about that. Trustee Lyra?
I just wanted to say that I think that this, that there should be a public letter to the minister saying that we're not going to meet the June 30th deadline. Because we have a responsibility to the public to engage them in our budget consultation. And I feel like if we do this without telling them, we have left them out of the loop. That's all I, I wanted to say about, about the letter that we choose to write, but I think that either the letter we write to the minister or a similar letter should be made public.
The chair's correspondence to, to the minister and, and other things like that is made public. It is published on our website. Trustee Bell?
Thank you, Lynn. My question is, before you go and meet now regularly with the minister. I imagine that you would be getting some sort of agenda in advance and that might help for other trustees to funnel. Ideas and issues through you if that could be shared? Question mark?
There are no agendas.
What?
There are no agendas provided.
Okay. Oh, wow.
Different, different people do things different ways in these meetings. They have 72, two school board chairs representative. Every board is able to have somebody participating. The minister makes his introductory remarks and then the floor is open to questions typically. So I will say this though, that, that the kinds of questions that we, we have been asking either through staff. Or, or in my conversations at these, we're not the only school board that is asking many of those questions. So I think that the important thing is to try to get our thoughts together in some kind of coherent form. And get them to, to places where hopefully heard. And I have no other hands on my list, so I would like to move on in to the report from our OPSA representatives.
Given the late hour, I won't belabor too much of it. You do have the report there. There were a couple of interesting items with the discussion with Minister Leche. Many of which we've already heard about tonight. The one that was fairly encouraging to me is that the ministry is working on curriculum and capital announcements. So I'm hoping for our new Fernbank School to hear something about that sooner than later. You'll see in the finance section that there have been quietly some capital announcements made, but they have been embargoed. So nobody across the province has been allowed yet to say if they have had their capital request granted. It was also very encouraging to hear from the minister that he does understand. The significant challenges around equity of learning, around internet access technology. And that income levels are a challenge. So at least that is on his radar. And he talked a fair bit about vulnerable children and the need to keep them very much in our thoughts and, and planning. The other thing that was interesting that he talked about is a significant amount of PD. Being done for teachers to help them adapt to the online learning. He also pointed out, there's a website called Ontario Together. And it actually has a pretty robust section for parents and students and students of all ages, including post-secondary. Another item of interest, OPSA is conducting another poll with asking Nanos to conduct a poll. On what the challenges have been of families during the shutdown. And what their concerns are around the September opening. And that's hoped to be completed in time to feed into the minister's September opening plan. An interesting item with respect to social distancing and transportation was noted that if social distancing were to be respected on buses. The capacity of buses would go from 72 to 12. Another item of significant concern, but I believe CFO Carson did allude to it a bit is WSIB. Premiums are increasing significantly. And there was concern about that relative to the voluntary program. That the experience, potential experience during employees volunteering. And adding employees that are currently not on our WSIB roles to the role. And an example was like our lunch monitors, if they would be deployed under the voluntary thing. So just something to keep in mind. There's a, a letter here about what OPSA is doing. For the COVID, the kind of information that they're providing. And also there is a section here at the end, just for trustees, information about the current. OPSA strategic priorities for the next school year. So if there's any feedback that you would like us to provide to OPSA on those, please provide them to Keith and myself. Other than that, I'm happy to hear either questions now or you can email me and I would CC everybody with the response.
Thank you very much, trustee Boothby, for a very thorough report as always. Are there any questions? I see trustee Bell, your hand is up, but I'm not sure whether you mean it to be up.
I'm sorry, my mouse is very finicky and when it says it's up, it's not and vice versa. Sorry.
You will have to speak to it very firmly. So I'm not seeing any new hands on this, so I will remind trustees if they have questions. Please, please let trustee Boothby and trustee Penny know what they are. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is matters for information. We don't actually have any new matters for information here. So we are now at new business. Is there any new business? And again, I'm not seeing any hands go up. So I would like to say once again, thank you very much to all of you for participating. In this, in, in a very thoughtful way. And special thanks to staff as well for the preparation that went into organizing this meeting. And making sure that all of our technology has run, run reasonably smoothly. And despite finicky mouses and finicky microphones, it has, it has in general, I think, run very well tonight. So a special, special thanks to everyone who was involved in that. We've reached the end of our agenda and it is not yet 11 o'clock. So I'm happy to say good night to all of you. We are adjourned.